For working conditions. In Atwater Village, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The state investigation follows the deaths of two workers at a similar plant in Bakersfield. A recent audit by city controller Wendy Grul found the city lost out on more than $100 million in federal stimulus money. Grul says the city failed to follow up on some grant applications while in other cases didn't apply at all.
My audit reveals that the city failed to pursue all eligible funding opportunities.
LA city controller Wendy Grul says the lack of effective centralized unit to handle grant applications led to the city losing out on more than $125 million in federal grants.
The lesson here is that the city must not leave opportunities and cash on the table. It is reckless to do so.
The city was awarded 24 of 88 competitive grants it applied for since funding became available in 2009. Those grants resulted in $261 million of a possible $1.3 billion. But the audit found the city was slow to accept the grants. Grul says the turnaround for accepting a grant is typically five to six weeks, but most grants took five or six months for the city council to accept.
In particular, one police training grant was awarded in September of 2008, but not finally approved by the council until June of 2010.
In one example, Grul found the city simply chose not to compete for $100 million in federal infrastructure grants. Department officials say the reason for not pursuing some of the grants is due to a lack of staffing or because they only applied for grants they felt they had the best chance of winning. The audit recommends creating a centralized body to pursue specific funding.
Primarily, it includes establishing and strengthening a centralized oversight unit to oversee the competitive grant application process to ensure that we get as many dollars as we possibly can for the city of Los Angeles.
Grul says she has been asking for an oversight unit since 2009, but said the lack of attention and focus by the city council has prevented that from happening.
We need to have a focused attention, a focused process that is going to guarantee that we get those dollars on the street as quickly as possible.
Changes could be on the way. A spokesman for Mayor Villaregoza says that a centralized grant office has been set up in the last couple of months. Los Angeles is a city with a $200 million shortfall. For city controller Wendy Grul, that means plenty of spending cuts across the board. Anna Marcos takes us to one town hall meeting where residents voice their opinion.
Government waste in the city of LA has found a mighty enemy in city controller Wendy Grul. So far in her term of office, she has launched almost 50 audits on government agencies, pinpointing $125 million in waste or fraudulent spending. This town hall meeting served to inform residents of the audits.
All of us are struggling, and the city is no different. As we look at budget deficits, as we look at service reductions, how we can do a better job.
Grul recently audited the city's process for applying for American stimulus funds. She found LA lost out on more than a billion dollars in grants that it could have gotten with a more centralized grant-seeking process. Grul also uncovered reckless spending practices at the Housing Authority, and she audited the Bureau of Street Services, the Community Redevelopment Agency, and many other departments. She gave each a scorecard, which residents can find on the city controller's website.
And it tells you who's not acted on those items: mayor, council, department head, city attorney, whatever it may be. And I wanted to do that, one, to make sure that everyone knew we were watching, to let the public know that we were being transparent.
Residents aired their views on everything from wanting cleaner sidewalks to taking down illegal signs to just plain complaining.
The number-one concern now was the sidewalks, the graffiti, and the illegal dumping. Something has to be done.
I spent most of my life looking for an honest politician. Well, I've found about five of them in that time, and Wendy's right there at the top.
This, the first of several town hall meetings. The input gathered here will help the city's number-one waste fighter zap even more financial waste in future audits. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
For more information on the city controller's audits and scorecard, visit controller.lacity.org. A recent green industry conference offered people a chance to learn just what drives the trillion-dollar global energy market. Rasha Goel has more on the industry's innovations, opportunities, and public policies.
Global leaders from the green industry came together at Verde Exchange's fifth annual Market Makers Conference in downtown Los Angeles to discuss the green energy market.
It's a conference under one roof that addresses all these sectors that make up the green economy.
Mayor Antonio Villaregoza was on hand to share his passion for making LA a clean tech capital.
Our port has set the world's highest bar for clean air standards for short-haul trucks. As of the first of the year, every drayage truck calling at our port is clearing this bar. Truck emissions in three years have been reduced by 80%. LA has one of the biggest markets for solar panels. Hybrid cars move off the dealers' lots at a brisk pace. The ranks of electric vehicle early adopters are growing.
The mayor also emphasized the need for the U.S. to make more long-term commitments when it comes to investing in green technology.
In 2010, Chinese companies invested over $54 billion in wind, solar, and other green projects. That, by the way, is 20 billion more than U.S. companies invested in the same year.
Officials say a common challenge is how to actually create renewable energy while keeping a low cost. It's a meeting of the minds at this conference that may perhaps lead the innovators closer to achieving their goals. From Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
And in more environmental news, Tom LaBange recently hosted a reception exploring urban health. Rasha Goel explains how our environment has a direct impact on our quality of life.
According to the Trust for Public Land, nearly half of Americans get less than the recommended minimum amount of physical activity. More than one-third engage in no leisure-time physical activity at all. Officials say parks play a critical role in improving the health and wellness of adults and children, and there is a great need for them.
The Trust for Public Land has conserved over 3 million acres across this country. 3 million acres are now parks for people that otherwise would have been developed land.
Another advocate of open space is Dr. Richard Jackson of the UCLA School of Public Health. He was recently recognized at a reception hosted by Councilmember Tom LaBange for his book entitled "Making Healthy Places: Designing and Building for Health, Sustainability, and Well-Being." He shared with audience members how times have changed and how people must be more proactive about their lifestyle.
Do you know how much high-frocked dose corn sugar you consumed in 1968? Zero. The average consumption in America is now 63 pounds. You cannot possibly burn that off unless you're on an extra cycle three hours a day.
Jackson's book focuses on how the design of our urban areas contributes or detracts from public health. Councilmembers Tom LaBange and Dennis Zine are supporters of open space and understand the need for it in the city.
I grew up in a city park system in Los Angeles, in Griffith Park, and all that was in between. And there's nothing like parks and open space for the experience that it gets you.
There's a connection between health, happiness, and what we have for the space that's left.
The city is currently working with the Trust for Public Land to create more green space in Los Angeles. From downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
The Los Angeles International Airport is making plenty of improvements while helping the local economy at the same time. Rasha Goel has the latest on the new changes at one of the world's busiest airports.
When the final nuts and bolts are in, this is what the new Tom Bradley International Terminal at LAX will look like. Construction is nearing the halfway mark. We joined Mayor Antonio Villaregoza and LA airport officials for a sneak peek at what's happening behind the scenes of this new terminal, containing 45,000 tons of steel.
This, actually, we're making history here at LAX. This is the largest single public works project ever in the history of the city of Los Angeles.
The new terminal will be located on the west side of the existing Tom Bradley Terminal. Officials say the renovation and changes as a whole will help LAX remain competitive in the global market.
We have a very hip, wonderful city, and our airport didn't look hip and wonderful. This is really fixing our front door as a welcoming melting pot of the United States.
Currently, this is the Tom Bradley International Terminal, but when construction is completed in 2013, 18 new gates will be added along with premier dining and premier retail shopping.
This investment means 40,000 construction jobs here in Los Angeles during a time of high unemployment. It's a $4.1 billion investment in making sure that we're a world-class facility, the gateway to Asia and Latin America.
And to better help spread the word, airport officials have launched a public education effort titled "LA Next."
We're really leaning in to spreading the word, sharing with everyone what is actually going on here at this airport.
You can check out the LA Next website at www.la-next.com. You can expect all other action at the Tom Bradley Terminal to start flying in in early 2013. Signing off from LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
According to airport officials, no money has been used from the city's general fund for LAX construction. The central utility plant project at Los Angeles International Airport recently marked a major construction milestone. Rasha Goel takes us to the topping-out ceremony where the last piece of steel was put into place, signifying good luck.
The central utility plant project at Los Angeles International Airport recently marked a major construction milestone with a topping-out ceremony. The last piece of structural steel was put into place, signifying good luck and success with the building.
We're building a new central utility plant, or CUP, as it's called. The CUP provides all of the heating and air conditioning for all of the buildings in the central terminal area.
This is the heartbeat of LAX. So even though it may not have a curved roof, it is what it takes in order to be sure that everything else here operates the way it's supposed to.
The plant, upon completion, will increase efficiency by nearly 70%. The new central utility plant, which will be four stories high and cover a 64,000-square-foot area, will replace the 50-year-old existing utility plant.
The existing plant was brought online in 1960, so it's literally, it's museum-quality vintage. In fact, if the plant breaks down, we have to actually machine the parts to fix it. Secondly, it doesn't have enough capacity to serve the new Tom Bradley Terminal and all the rest of the building that we're doing.
The old plant, shown here, will be demolished, and a thermal storage reservoir will be built in its place, and it will help save the cost of energy.
Which allows us to run the utilities at night when we're paying a lower rate, and then use the cold water during the day and not have to run the energy plant.
And for many Angelenos, the construction of this plant has created new jobs.
It's great to have guys working. There's a lot of guys that have been out of work, and I think that is what the one concern is right now. This is generating work.
Work that officials expect to be completed by '24.
The new LAX Central Utility Plant is a LEED-certified facility. While a World War II legend moves closer to a final home in the port of San Pedro, Gil Reyes explains.
The Port of Los Angeles has released a draft environmental impact report for the USS Iowa Relocation Project. It's expected to bring the historic battleship to a permanent berth in San Pedro later this year. The Iowa was first commissioned in 1943 and was the namesake for an entire class of battleships. It saw action in the Atlantic and Pacific during World War II, the Korean War, and worldwide through the 1980s, before finally being decommissioned in 1990. The report outlines plans to relocate the battleship from San Francisco to berth 87 in San Pedro, where she will serve as a museum and educational facility. It describes how local resources will be impacted by the move and the related construction work necessary to make the Iowa viable as a museum. Gil Reyes for LA this week.
There's an increasing number of services available to people who are trying to get their small business off the ground. Gil Reyes reports on the improvements taking place at LA's Business Assistance Centers.
City leaders say it's reason to celebrate. There's now more help for those companies that are expected to leave Los Angeles out of the recession.
Small businesses are the backbone of the local economy. 325,000 small businesses in LA, and by the way, they look like LA. Disproportionately, the fastest-growing businesses are Latina-owned businesses, as a matter of fact. Yes.
And those small companies could be receiving a boost with newly expanded services at six business source centers throughout Los Angeles. All of them, including this one in Boyle Heights, now have full-time staff to help business owners sort through the permitting process. Centers will also offer more business workshops and one-on-one counseling. With all this and more, LA City Councilmember Jose Weisar says Boyle Heights is on a roll.
The last three years alone, we've seen over $2 billion in new public project improvements: a new rail line, four new schools, a new police station. Every park in Boyle Heights has had some type of improvement.
Weisar says improved business assistance programs have also boosted the chances of small businesses to compete for city projects. A new local preference ordinance also gives LA-based companies an edge on competitive bidding. All of these are tricks of the trade that you can learn here and at five other assistance centers throughout Los Angeles. In Boyle Heights, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Besides the Boyle Heights office, there are Business Assistance Centers in the San Fernando Valley, South LA, Central City, and the West Side. Well, a long-stalled project moves ahead: additional bike lanes in Venice, a sister-city agreement for a greener world, and the city council acts to protect incarcerated youth. All that and more in City Beat. Mayor Villaregoza issued a statement recently applauding the Obama administration for moving forward with the construction of the new Los Angeles Federal Courthouse in downtown LA. The long-stalled project at the corner of Broadway and First Street replaced a Depression-era courthouse on Spring Street, which has security and asbestos problems. The mayor added that this significant federal project will create thousands of much-needed construction jobs over the next five years. At a time when unemployment remains high, a project of this magnitude is a welcome stimulus to our economy. 11th District Councilman Bill Rosenthal announced that work has begun on a new transportation project at one of Venice's busiest streets. Called the Main Street Road Diet, the project between Windward Circle and the city of Santa Monica will reduce travel lanes to one in each direction while creating bike lanes on both sides of the street. "We are laying the foundation for a truly multimodal system here in Los Angeles," Rosenthal says, "that will offer people a choice to travel by bike, bus, automobile, or even foot." Councilmember Tom LaBange joined with his counterpart from Los Angeles, sister-city Berlin, to sign a friendship agreement. The partnership promotes clean and green industry in the north Atwater area here in LA and the Marzon-Hellersdorf district in Berlin.
It's an important opportunity to develop a green tech zone, and we could work to that. Non-binding, there's no taxpayers' money involved, it's just to encourage the relationship, the people-to-people, that makes so much difference.
The cooperative relationship between the two cities goes back a long way. Berlin became LA's sixth sister city in March of 1967. The city council has unanimously approved Councilmember Tony Cardenas's resolution to support the National Rape Elimination Commission's recommendation. The resolution supports banning the placement of young people under the age of 18 in adult jails and prisons.
Statistics show that when they are put in those situations, that when it comes to rape, it happens at a much, much higher level, and this is something, to me, that's very logical and very American for us to make sure that we do not participate or allow this to take place in our local and/or federal prisons.
Helping kids develop a lifelong love of learning is priceless. That's why Mayor Villaregoza stopped by the 99th Street School in Watts recently to help celebrate the fourth anniversary of Donuts with Dad. The program, Donuts with Dads, brings together over 200 men from the surrounding community into the classroom to read to students.
Donuts for Dads was a way to get dads and uncles and brothers and cousins and male figures into the school. So the kids get to see someone there, a male figure, a positive male figure emphasizing education, promoting reading.
Several years ago, a previous principal discovered that 50% of students at the school didn't have a father living in their own household.
So as a school, we really tried to come together and think about different programs that we could create to encourage more active male involvement in our school, in our classrooms, whether it's through a morning program like this or through more in-depth mentoring.
Peter tried and tried to whistle. He went... But he couldn't. So instead, he began to turn himself around.
Donuts with Dads is only one part of 99th Street's Parent Engagement Program, built on the principle that the parent is the child's first teacher and should be an equal partner with the school in their child's education. Members of the Los Angeles Police and Fire Departments also stopped by to read to the kids and very likely shared a donut or two. Classic music, cutting-edge movies, and traditional Native American culture all come together on this week's Things to Do.
On Saturday, February 4th, from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m., enjoy the artistry of a cappella duo quintet, Street Corner Renaissance. Led by NAACP Award winner Maurice Kitchen, the group has opened for everyone, from Chuck Berry to Cool in the Gang and Boys to Men. Selections include a tribute to Sam Cooke, a gospel celebration, and a civil rights anthem. In San Pedro at the Grand Annex, 434 West Sixth Street in San Pedro. For more information, visit www.grandvision.org. Also on Saturday, consider attending the Eurochannel Short Films Tour, a film festival beginning at 7:00 p.m. at the Theater Raymond Cabas. Through a selection of short films, take a trip across Europe through the eyes of 54 innovative directors. Tonight's program features 10 to 12 shorts with a complimentary wine-and-cheese intermission. Theater Raymond Cabas is located at 10361 West Pico Boulevard, near the intersection of Pico and Beverly Glen. For more information, check out www.trk.us.com. Every Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. is American Indian Culture Day at the Autry National Center. Bring the entire family to learn more about American Indian cultures with storytelling, music, traditional and contemporary games, hands-on learning, and more. There's something new every Sunday. For more information, visit www.theautry.org. Remember, you can find links for these and other events on LA this week's Facebook page. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. I'm Rasha Goel.
Thanks a lot, Rasha. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Brian Ojima. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also check us out on our Facebook page for more information on some of the stories we've covered. We'll see you back here next week for another edition of LA this week. So long, everybody.
I am here to talk about the problem of counterfeiting and piracy. It goes beyond the manufacturer and sale of cheap unauthorized goods. Such crimes impact legitimate businesses, employment, and even public safety. The money a consumer pays for a counterfeit or pirated item may very well be financing even more serious criminal activity, like gang crime. I'm doing everything in my power to protect the citizens of Los Angeles, but I also need your help. Please do not purchase these items. Together, we will combat these illegal practices and make Los Angeles a better and safer city. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
City Hall. My name is Herb Wesson, and I am the President of the Los Angeles City Council. We have 10 members that are here, which means we have a quorum at this time. This council meeting is in session. First order of business, or Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Alarcon, Buscayeno, Cardenas, England, Garcetti, Weezer, Carrez, Corrian, Lavonch, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson, 10 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Buscayeno moves, and Ms. Perry seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Zine seconds. That brings us to the agenda. So, members, what we're going to do before we start today, we're going to quickly go through the agenda. I think, Mr. Clerk, we start with, what, Items 1 through 15?
Yes, sir. Before doing so, there is a request from a member to continue Item Number 8. Item 8 to this Friday, the 3rd. Item 8 to February 3, sir.
Okay, without objection. So on the remaining items, do we have any cards on those items?
Sir, we have a card on Number 1 for Items 1 through 15. Items 1 through 15 are items known as for a public hearing.
Specials, members? Hearing and seeing none? Why don't, before we start, why don't we open and close the public hearing on the remaining balance? It's time to vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next?
Mr. President, Items 16 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, I heard 18 and 19, but I didn't, from Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 18 and 19. Hell, any other specials, members? Specials? And there are no cards. Mr. Clerk, are there cards?
No, sir, there is not.
Okay, then let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that brings us to what?
Mr. President, Items 20 through 32 are items for which public hearings have not been held, and votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Specials, members?
Item 25 for Councilman Rosendahl.
25 for Mr. Rosendahl. Members, any other specials? Cards?
Mr. President, we do have cards on 27, 31, and 32.
Okay. Then on the remaining, let's open the roll. Wait, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, 24. It's been recommended that 24 be held on the desk for closed session. So anyway, at this point, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, where are we at this juncture?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, so it's my understanding that we have a card on Item 32?
That's correct, sir.
Why don't we, could you give me the card on 32? Why don't we ask Mr. Tony Wilkinson to please come forward from the Panorama City Neighborhood Council? Good morning, sir, and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. President. Tony Wilkinson from Panorama City, I'll make this very quick. We are blessed with a skate park in Panorama City on Blythe Street, which is an area that needs an awful lot of help. It's in Cardenas Park, named for Councilmember Cardenas's parents, and we really appreciate the help of Rob Deardick in bringing this park to our community. It's an awesome contribution. Thank you very much. I'm fully in support of this motion.
Well, thank you, sir, for coming here from the Valley. So at this time, members, I would like to take Item 32 out of order. I'd like to ask Mr. Reyes to come take over the comm, and then we will have our first Wednesday presentation. Everybody, let's bring up the crew. Come on.
Okay, Council President Wesson, the microphone is yours.
Bring up, bring up the whole crew. Anyway, I'm joined today by Councilmember Weezer, who's going to be my wingman on this presentation. Several years ago, I had an opportunity to meet a young man who was in the process of constructing a skateboard park at Lafayette Park. He gave the mayor and I the opportunity to ride on the, per Guinness Book of World Records, the largest skateboard on the planet. It was one heck of an experience for me as an individual that has never ridden a skateboard. Since then, he's built another skateboard park in my district. And that might not seem like a very big thing to some of you, but after I met Rob, and then I got in my car to go to another event, it seemed like I saw children on every corner, either on a skateboard or carrying a skateboard. And I said to myself, my God, there is a serious need for skateboard parks. This young man, at a young age, at 11 or 12 years old, decided he wanted to be engaged in skateboarding. His parents, who unfortunately are not here today, they are in Ohio, both of us are Buckeyes, his parents saw just how excited he was when he would ride the skateboards. So they kind of built ramps in his backyard so that he could practice and hone his skills. At the age of 16, he left school, traveled to San Diego, where his professional skateboarding career took off. Then all of a sudden, he's winning races, he's breaking records, he's doing all of these things. He decided he was going to be a television celebrity. So there was a series on MTV called Rob and Big. And then there was Rob Deardick's Fantasy Factory. And the one now is Ridiculousness, or something, something like that. And he's a little guy, he's a fun guy, and kind of, they do all the weirdest things in the world on the show. But he told me once, he remembered when he was coming up, that technically he had to break the law to skateboard in various areas throughout this country. He and his guys and his crew would go into places where no trespassing signs. And he made a commitment, a commitment then, that he was going to do everything within his power to build skateboards throughout this country, starting with the first one that he built in his hometown of Kettering, Ohio. It's very important to me that we recognize someone that does these extra services for us. What I neglected to mention was the first skateboard park that we built in Lafayette Park, members, we didn't pay for. Rob Deardick raised the funds, and Carl's Jr. paid for it. At the second skateboard park that is in my district, we paid some, but he paid for the design, took care of the construction, and he constructs these parks, safe spots, safe, what is it? Skate spots, safe spots. They're very safe. And he always puts in money. So again, on my park, which is skate park, which is so special, I told him that I wanted to name it after Charmette Baumpla, my chief of staff, who passed away. So if you're ever at Rancho Cenica Park, you'll see this beautiful skateboard park and a beautiful monument to Charmette with her image and the images of her two nieces. Ladies and gentlemen, today is going to be Rob Deardick Day in the City of Los Angeles. And Rob, before I let Mr. Weezer speak and you speak from the podium, I'd like to say, Mr. Clerk, can you read the item?
Resolution, Wesson, Garcetti, Weezer, relative to declaring February 1st, 2012 as Rob Deardick Day in the City of Los Angeles in recognition of his hard work and dedication to the youth of the city.
With that said, Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations. Today is Rob Deardick Day. I'd like to, I want to say, as soon as he finished building a park in Mr. Weezer's district, he immediately started building, building the skateboard park in my district. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jose Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and indeed is a very special day here in the City of Los Angeles, as we recognize a transplant from Ohio, but someone who has given his soul and his passion not only to better the lives of young people in our cities, but if you can see, one of the most important things we strive to do as a city is to keep our streets safe. And what better way to do it than to provide venues where our young people can go and show off their stuff and do something they're passionate about? At Hollenbeck Park in Bull Heights, we had an old skate, skate area. Not many kids used it. It was next to a tennis court, some tennis courts. And when Rob Deardick came up with the idea and said, we would like to go there and put in a new skate park, you could see the marked difference. You see hundreds of young people going to that park each and every week, keeping busy, doing something they enjoy. And when we opened up that park, you should have seen the kids who were just thrilled to see a new park come to their neighborhood. Rob, we can't thank you enough, because you are not only providing our young people with things to do, but you are helping the city in many, many ways. You're helping our kids get the ricery they need, making our streets safer. And I'm happy and honored to know that you have the factory, your factory is in Bull Heights, an area where I grew up and live, and a very special place, where it's one of the city's first suburbs. And here you are dramatically changing the city. So thank you so much for all your efforts. And on this February 1st, Rob Deardick Day will live on for eternity. Congratulations, Rob.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Weezer. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, and I appreciate the cooperation from all of the members and the other staff that are here. I know many of you had to fill out a waiver, because we are filming, it's my understanding, the season finale of Rob's show. But I'll tell you something that was ironic. I went to the Fantasy Factory. I was not required to fill out anything, and he put me on a zip line, which I had never done before, and then he says, and when you get close to the wall, turn sideways. I did not turn sideways. I almost broke two of my legs. I should have had a waiver to sign then. Again, let's give it up for Rob Deardick.
Councilman Weston, we do have several council colleagues on the queue. Councilmember Englander.
I just wanted to first thank Councilman Weston and Weezer for bringing Rob to council on this. I wanted also to let you know, as Chair of Public Safety, that we have officers outside, and we've looked up the statute of limitations on your trespass. And so while it's Rob Deardick Day, you'll be arrested on the way out of chambers, I just want to let you know. In all seriousness, and I signed the waiver, I didn't see in the waiver where we're not collecting royalties, so this is fantastic. I needed to offset my income. These skate parks are so important for our youth. Crime is down nine years in a row. Crime is down nine years in a row because our youth have an opportunity, because people like you get involved in the city to make a difference, because our youth have a place to go after school, to keep them off of drugs, away from gangs, and on board, and on a skateboard. And that is awesome, because if they didn't have that opportunity, they would be getting in trouble. These are kids that would be out on the street looking for something to do and causing mischief. These are kids that don't have an opportunity, that don't have either parents at home, or they have dual working parents, and this gives them that outlet, that release, that ability to work with peers, and to get involved, to have fun, and to go to someplace safe. So I want to say, God bless you for making a difference. God bless you for stepping up and helping the kids that need the help the most. God bless you for putting everything out there and opening these facilities throughout the districts, throughout the hardest districts that need them most. We have Pedlow Skate Park in my district, and I will tell you, it's always packed, there's always a line to get in, there's always kids looking to get more involved, and it's not just about learning tricks, it's about on skateboards, and it's about having fun and giving them an opportunity. So I truly appreciate Weston and Weezer for bringing you forward, for celebrating these victories, and to help the City of Los Angeles. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Englander. Again, can we please have quiet in the chamber? Appreciate your cooperation. Councilmember Zine and Councilmember Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rob, I'm way past the skateboard stage, but I'm into the motorcycle stage. I'm way past Tom LeBonds. Not weight, but age-wise. Thank you, Tom LeBonds, Mr. Hollywood. But what you've done is obviously created what needs to be done for the community, and I welcome you, with your bodyguard, to come to San Fernando Valley. We have some great locations. We have a lot of youth that need a place. We've got one on Victory Boulevard, next to Balboa Park, but I welcome you to come to San Fernando Valley, where we have acres of land. We'd love to put one in, in the San Fernando Valley. I know that Mr. Weston is very proud of the one in his district. I think he's got two. Mr. Weezer, other folks that have them, but the Valley has a lot of youth. We have a lot of need for that, and we will reach out and embrace anything you want to do to bring to San Fernando Valley, to help to establish one location in the southwest San Fernando Valley. It's desperately needed, but what you've done obviously is to be commended, and I applaud you for that. We are here to serve the people, and as the youth grow into adults, we want to make sure they have something positive, and what you're bringing is something extremely positive. So congratulations, and it's an honor that not everyone receives. We don't do this every single day for someone, but Mr. Weston has obviously reached out, very impressed with what you've accomplished, so great accomplishments to you. And if you can introduce the folks behind you that have not been introduced, I guess they're part of your posse? If we could do that.
Zine?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
I'm in charge of this presentation.
Yeah, but it's my two minutes.
Your two minutes are up.
Oh, I'm done. Thank you.
And Rob is going, Rob is going to speak later, and he will introduce his crew at that time. And I'm glad, yesterday I told Mr. Zine that we were going to be here and have MTV taping us, or filming us, and I suggested that he get a haircut. You followed my lead, and it looks wonderful on you. You look very cute.
God's done wonders on it.
Okay, yeah. We only have three more speakers on the queue. Councilmember Cardenas, and then Councilmember Buscagno.
Good morning, sir. Thank you very much. I think that it's fitting for me to point out that Rob Deardick is there for the kids in a way that, it's immeasurable, because as was mentioned earlier, it's unfortunate that kids, young people, who want to just have fun and do something healthy. It's really unfortunate that at this day and age, we always say that most American kids don't spend enough time outside. They're playing video games, or they're sitting on the couch. But when you get on a skateboard, now that's a workout, or if you, like my son Andres, who rides inline skates, and I have to take him outside my district to go to a skate park so he can have fun. And my biggest problem is getting him to stop so I can bring him back home, and he would skate all into the evening till, you know, till the morning, if he could. My point is, it's really unfortunate that we contradict ourselves as adults when we tell kids, get off the couch and go out and play, yet if they want to ride a skateboard or ride inline skates like my son, very likely, they're going to be doing something against the law unless we have a safe place for them to play. And the fact that we are turning one after another after another of our parks into having a component of a skate park is really, really important for us to continue and to grow that. I think that at every park that has a tennis court, or has a baseball field, or what have you, it should also have a skate park. And if you just look at the numbers, more and more kids, boys and girls, my daughter Alina, she skates as well. She's 13 years old, and she skates. Yeah, I get worried for my kids. I think they're going to break an arm or something like that, but when you really think about it, it is healthy, it's good for them, and they're doing something that they enjoy. And I think it's really important for us to understand that when somebody is willing to step up and put his own time and money and reputation on the line to create these incredible places, safe places for our children, we should applaud you. Creating this day as Rob Deardick Day is the least that we can do, but at the same time, I think it's important that people like yourself be a great role model for our children, and also for us adults, to say, you know what, if you have something to give, keep giving until you can't give anymore. And Rob, I know you personally, and I got to thank you for all that you've done for the entire community of Los Angeles. I know that you're going around the country doing this wherever you can and wherever you're welcome, and I also want to thank you for having an impact directly on my family and my children. In addition to that, I think that, Rob, your timing is impeccable, unless it's, Mr. President, you're a genius, because we have a new council member today. And being that this is the first vote, you made it real easy for my colleague, Joe Buscano, not to mess up his first vote, because who's going to vote against Rob Deardick Day? It's like motherhood and apple pie. So thank you, Rob, for helping to break in Joe, our new council member, on his first day, on his first vote, and making it easy for him. Thank you.
Thank you, and to amplify further his first speech, Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Everyone knows what my second vote's going to be on, but nonetheless, Rob, thank you so much on behalf of my constituents and behalf of the City of Los Angeles for all that you've done for the young people of our city. And I want to echo my colleagues' words, and Councilmember Englander and Councilmember Cardenas, of thank you for being there for the kids. And as a police officer, I've mentored many throughout my 15-year career with the LAPD, and having skate parks has given them an avenue of somewhere where to go, a place for them to go, to be safe, and to have fun at the same time. I would rather, as I often said, I would rather have them on the skateboard than breaking into cars or graffitiing. So, Rob, thank you so much, and for your passion and your love to the young people in our city. In my district, I'm pleased to have a few skate parks in Wilmington, in Watts. We're going to build one at Peck Park in San Pedro very soon. We have a skate park under the 110 freeway at Channel, and I too have seen what a skate park can do. But in San Pedro, most recently, we've had a couple tragic deaths of two young people that have been bombing the streets of San Pedro, because there's numerous hills, and these are very tragic incidents. And when you speak, I want you to send a message to these young folks, to make it clear to them that, to be safe while they're out there, and out there skateboarding, and really send a message to use the skate parks. I know these kids who are bombing, they tend to avoid the skate parks because they're more, it's more of a controlled environment. So please, in your words, I ask you, respectfully ask you, to send a message to my constituents in the Harbor area, let them know, especially the kids, the importance of wearing a helmet and being safe. So thank you, Council President Weston and Councilmember Weezer, for claiming this day as Rob Deardick Day. Congratulations, Rob, and we're going to do great things. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it's under the three-minute limit, too.
Let's give Joe applause on his front.
Councilman Buscagno, that was under three minutes. That was really great. Really good. Councilman LeBonds.
Thank you very much, Rob. Good to see you. On behalf of my son, Charles, much love. He's in school. I didn't tell him you were going to be here today, because he would want to cut school. But anyway, you've done so much in North Hollywood Park, the transformation, it's athleticism. You know, people riding on a board and what they do, I see that development in my son. Mr. Cardenas spoke of his children, and all of that is so important. So congratulations, Mr. Weston, you've got a great guy right behind you right there, Mr. Weezer, all that you do, and I really appreciate it. Just want to tell you, the history of this chambers once, Jack Nicholson was sitting right there, and in came a bunch of sheep, because they were making the movie Chinatown. I was hoping you'd be coming in on one of your boards coming up that row, but maybe next time. Let's hear it for Rob Deardick.
Thank you, Councilman LeBonds. I just want to take a moment to thank you, Mr. Deardick. I had the pleasure of visiting your factory and to see you in action, raising resources for the children, and that was an amazing event, and it's obvious the impact you've had on the city, and I thank you for that. The microphone is yours.
Mr. Rob Deardick, everyone.
First of all, thank you all so much. I mean, really, it is an absolute and complete honor, especially Councilmember Weston and Weezer here. I know that, you know, heard more than anything, to set this whole thing off, I had a vision for what I could do for Los Angeles as a whole. Skateboarding was built here. It was invented in Venice Beach, and I knew there was a, if we could show the world, this is how Los Angeles did it, that the world would follow behind, and when we built that first one in Lafayette Park, you know, I asked, you know, I want to try to get one in every council district, and one by one, we really started knocking them down. Jose Weezer's district, who's right there in the Fantasy Factory, and actually, I live in Mr. LeBonds's district, and I do believe Charles is the only reason we got that one built, but look, you know, and Mr. Cardenas really, you know, supporting everything that I do, from not only building the park that's in his family's name, but helping me with getting a facility out at the airport to help me build a project for my street league, and every last aspect of building these, they're just, it's simple. It's like, let me help you build a safe, legal place for kids to ride a skateboard. And for me, the wrecking parks has been absolutely incredible. John Muckry, I couldn't have done any of this without Paul Viscaiano, who, you know, really, you know, give it up for Paul Viscaiano. You know, he really has able to kind of walk me into this world with everyone here and understand of helping me meet all of you to execute something on this level, and building all these parks, that's seven already, and hopefully, we have 20 at some point, hopefully 100, I don't know, but make no mistake, there's a revolution that started in Los Angeles with these safe spots, skate spots, that is becoming a complete global thing that will always be pointed out here. I'd like to thank my whole crew here, Big Black, Drama, Chanel, The Big Cat. Okay? Go ahead, guys. But let me say this, you know, at my core, okay, I reached a certain level, and it was about giving back, not for showcasing and being able to say like, oh, look, I've got a Deardick Day, and I get to stand in front of the council and give a speech. This is difficult stuff. It's just the nature of who I am. At my soul, I'm just a kind individual, you know, and for me, there's not enough simple kindness in the world, and for Rob Deardick Day forever, I want it to be more than just about skateboarding, but I want you to ask yourself at the end of each day of Rob Deardick Day, one question. Deardick? Did you really do everything kind? You know, I would like to have this be more than just about skateboarding, but a day of where we could dedicate it to kindness, no making fun of councilmembers' weight, not talking about, you know, haircuts, you know, saying, you want to know what? Councilmember LeBonds, you look great. Did you lose some weight? Mr. Cardenas, I don't know if I told you, but that last resolution, that speech you gave was incredible. It's just about common kindness, you know, with random acts of kindness, and that's, for me, as I go on, and I will take this honor and live this day further, I will celebrate this as Rob Deardick Day forever, and it's always going to be about, can we just share simple kindness? So again, I appreciate all of you for putting me in this position and even honoring me with this. Mr. Weston, honestly, you know how much, you know, you're an absolute great friend of mine, and I'm glad you didn't break your legs at the Fantasy Factory, you know, because we'd be living in a mansion together. But honestly, I truly, truly appreciate this from the bottom of my heart, and thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Deardick. And Councilman Weston, we do have one more council member who would like to speak.
Oh.
Yeah, one more council member would like to speak. Councilman Rosendahl.
When you mentioned Venice Beach, know this, that Dogtown, which was the whole beginning of it, was in Venice, and when I got elected to this, the first thing I did was build skateboard parks. Put the one on Venice Beach, put one in Stoner Park, and put one in Westchester. And you know Jesse Martinez, who has taken over in a very serious way, mentoring of all the young kids that go to the different parks, especially Venice. He's got a whole bunch of guys who came out of that era 25, 30 years ago, and it's amazing. Then we got involved with a guy named Steve Berra. You probably know him. We've got millions of people on the website throughout the nation, and he helped us with the Annenberg, build another one over in Westchester. And so when we had that opening, out of nowhere came hundreds and hundreds of kids on their skateboards. But this all was inspired by Adam Hamilton, who lived with me. There was no skateboard parks in the 11th district, and kids, that is a powerful, important way of not only getting around, but connecting and interacting, and my God, they can tell you stories of guys like we never heard of that come out of the engagement of the skateboard. So I want to honor you and thank you for being also on television and giving everybody that energy and support for skateboarding. Bless you. Thank you.
I want to say again, you was born in your district, birthed, and you've done an incredible job of embracing each aspect of it, because it's not only the seven I've built, but the Berra ones, and Paul Rodriguez building a couple. It's like, this Los Angeles has embraced it on a level that is going to be the blueprint for the rest of the world, I promise you that. So it's a lot bigger than I think the city can even realize. It seems simple, but it is a true case study on what the absolute future of the sport will be, and again, it was born in Venice Beach.
Mr. Weston, bring it home.
Okay, I am going to bring it home by saying to Dennis Zine, I'm sorry, and you look beautiful. Anyway, one more round of applause for Rob Deardick.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, can you tell us where we're at tonight?
Very good, sir. At this point in time, would you like to reconsider items two through seven? Those were the ordinances. We do have 14 members now present, and if you'd like to reconsider them?
Yes, well, let's reconsider those items. Can we open a roll? Close a roll? Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay.
Very good, sir. Now, that was, first was the vote for reconsideration, now actually, the vote on the items themselves.
Okay, so let's open a roll? Close a roll? Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay.
Mr. President, at this point in time, would you like to go to general public comment?
Yes, let's move into public comment. And we have, again, folks, thank you for coming to City Hall Chambers. We do have several folks on the cards, I'm gonna call you. Please come up to the microphone, you can line up three at a time, that we can keep this moving. We have Gordon Patterson, Richard Shave, and John Walsh. Come on up to the microphone, please. Mr. Patterson, Mr. Shave, and Mr. Walsh. Good day, sir.
Good morning. Can you hear me all right?
Speaking of the microphone, there you go.
My name is Gordon Patterson. I grew up on Bunker Hill in the 1940s and 1950s, and I'm here to mark the end of the CRA.
I'm sorry, Mr. Patterson, can you please take your conversations outside? Again, we have too many conversations along the pillars, right behind the council members. We have many conversations. Again, there's one going on right now. We're not gonna move until we keep this chamber quiet. Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you. As I said, I'm here to mark the end of the CRA. My family owned the Salt Box and the Castle, among other properties, up on Bunker Hill that were taken by the CRA in the redevelopment. And I'm here to say that despite what was said at the time, Bunker Hill was not a blighted slum. The buildings were old, they needed to be renewed, but it could have been developed differently. And I'm here to bear witness, not only for the property owners, but for the residents, the 9,000 people that were displaced from Bunker Hill at that time. They were, by and large, lower-income people, writers, artists, people who worked downtown, and what at the time were called pensioners, but really, today, we call the elderly poor, who needed advocates, but were, because they were easy to overlook. We had a vibrant community, people lived there, there were businesses, most of the residents' needs could be met within walking distance, and that's gone. We had a residential community that was displaced for a business district, while down below, there is an existing business district that now sits largely empty, and ironically, is trying to be converted back into residential use. The buildings were old, but were not run down until after the CRA announced its intentions in the 1940s, and in the next couple of decades, people stopped taking care of their property, understandably, although I remember my father and I spending time painting and doing repairs on our property.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Shave, Richard Shave, and then John Walsh.
Hello, I'd just like to address the council on the dissolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of Los Angeles, really, the salient aspect of development in post-war Los Angeles, and with its dissolution, the end of an era of what I believe is urban redevelopment as public policy substitute. And I look forward to life after the CRA in Los Angeles as public policy that is sustainable and empathic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And then we'll have Daniel Gus.
Free at last, free at last from the CRA, can't redevelop anything. I'm told I can't show you what's in here, or I'll be arrested. So if the cameras wanna know what's in here, come outside, and I'll show it. You could spend a half an hour on an MTV commercial. We did it together, a coalition that started with Marxist Leninists and went across the board to libertarians. We fought the Community Redevelopment Agency, known as the Great Satan, and we defeated them. They are dead. The evil empire is gone. What this means to everyone, the Kelo decision in Supreme Court said, you decide, you decide every state whether a developer can be handed over your private property for a non-public use. And today, thanks to Jerry Brown, and the Democrats, and a few Republicans, no one can take your property in the state of California for a private use. That's what happened at midnight tonight, when the CRA died. Now, the CRA has a big plan. They're thinking like that old TV show. They're gonna go into a time machine, go back, and prevent Pat Brown from marrying his wife. Therefore, there will be no Jerry Brown, and when we come to the future, he will be gone, because it was Jerry Brown that caused this. It's Jerry Brown that we wanna thank, and we wanna thank everybody here for drop-dead CRA, they celebrated throughout. And we wanna thank Valerie Stewart, whose property, the Ebony Showcase Theater, Nick and Edna Stewart's Theater, was stolen by the racist CRA. And you're no better than them. Have a nice day, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Daniel Gus, Henry Marine, and then Daniel Garcia. Good day, sir.
Good morning. Happy birthday, Jeff Ebenstein, wherever you are. The death watch is on for the abused puppies in Eric Garcetti's district. Mr. Garcetti has not said one public word about their plight. They're at the North Central Shelter. Their impound numbers are A1276591 and A1276592. They are about to be killed. Mr. Garcetti prolonged the suffering needlessly of these puppies. His office did not respond in a timely manner, and Mr. Garcetti has refused to correct the policy problem that caused it. He has not done that so far. When I criticized Mr. Garcetti about this, in 12 years, he's never said one word to me in these chambers, but he called me over here and said, if you challenge me like this publicly, and if he disagrees with you, Mr. Garcetti will cut off communications. Imagine, somebody who wants to be neighbor, your mayor, threatens to cut off communications if he disagrees with your position, or for whatever reason. So I have news for Mr. Garcetti, who's talking over here, by the way, during my time. I have news for Mr. Garcetti, who wants to be mayor. He may wanna cut off communication with me. What he doesn't know is, I may cut off communication with Mr. Garcetti and air every single humane problem here, instead of via email with his staff. And I don't think he's gonna like it, 'cause there's plenty of humane problems that I can air here, on Facebook, and over on blogs. So cutting off the communications with somebody who's trying to better your district is a bad idea, especially if you wanna be mayor. As far as being mayor...
Please address the council, sir.
I am.
Okay.
What did I say to Mr. Garcetti?
Please continue.
My time is running out.
Please continue.
Can I please have 30 seconds? Hmm. Wow, getting me off track. That's unreasonable. Can I please have 30 seconds? 'Cause I didn't say anything to Mr. Garcetti.
Please continue, sir.
Okay. With respect to succeeding Mr. Garcetti in his district, I'm not so sure that somebody in his office should replace him. Perhaps Mickey Jackson...
Thank you very much.
Perhaps John Walsh should be the nominating person.
Thank you, sir.
HollywoodHighlands.org.
Our next speaker, Henry Marine, then Daniel Garcia. Is Henry Marine here? Daniel Garcia, and then Mickey Jackson.
Morning. Hackla Pershidel rules, Chapter 108, shows how the formula for becoming a permanent employee from a casual or perdean position, as does MOU 35. But apparently, I'm trying to figure out, when did college graduates stop learning how to read or understand their duty to the people above and below them? We work by laws here. Ask your city attorney. I mean, everybody knows about the thousand-hour rule. Everybody knows if you borrow money from somebody, you gotta pay interest. It shows the formula, you're gonna take, let the union administer 100% for $999. The city council's gonna withdraw 10% from the David's Bacon sum for $999. And so now we know how much money was diverted from public employee pension and benefit plans for the past 22 years. And now you're crying about, oh, we can't afford the pensions. You've been giving money to the union for 22 years. You've been holding, cutting, skimming 10% out of the pay for 22 years. Deductive reason is all you need, and like I'm saying, ever since I heard the story about Job getting twice as much as food demand and power attorney used at will in the first place, I've been waiting for this day. So let's do business. You're gonna deny my claim, or what? What you gonna do? I filed a claim on October 2nd, 2009, and nobody's answered it yet. The city attorney established, they cannot deny a claim or the pay and benefits of anybody.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Daniel Garcia, Mickey Jackson, Daniel Garcia, and Mickey Jackson. Following Ms. Jackson, we have Scott Smith. Good day, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Chicago. I want to begin my public comment with the same quote, "With great power comes with great responsibility." It's also true that with great law comes with great implementation. And I am here to tell you that people with disabilities want their full implementation as a fair education act. The Fair Education Act is a common sense law that requires schools to introduce factual information about social movement, school events, and history of people of color, people with disabilities, and LGBD people. If the system's social studies lesson, it also prevents schools from adapting instruction material that's disminished. These laws will eradicate the social stigma of people with disabilities just as much as the civil rights laws and the ADA, and the ADA great law. But when laws are not enforced, then this community will prevail. I want to say, I want to give this, my speech, and my, um, my factual frequently asked question about the Fair Act, and I want to say that the school needs this law implemented.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mickey Jackson, Scott Smith, and then James Shaw. Good day.
Mickey Jackson, HollywoodHighlands.org. Well, you know, I made a nice art project for you. It's plastic and paper, and I was told I can't even bring it in inside of a bag. Now, I think the difference between a book and something with paper and a little plastic, and the difference between a newspaper, I mean, we could get into a real interesting conversation. Apparently, the First Amendment does not apply at City Hall in Los Angeles unless one of the council members would like to let me show it to you. Ah, First Amendment defenders, don't fall all over each other trying to get up. Yes, the guard told me he would take me outside, and I, he would do all sorts of, if I showed you just a simple placard. You know, Rob, your skateboard parks are safe now. The CRA will be dead, and they cannot eminent domain it to put up apartments, high-rises, and other things. I think it is particularly fitting that Jerry Brown is the governor who ended this. He has had to sit and watch the great legacy of his father, Pat Brown, who built the infrastructure of this state, and no one else has since, go to seed, fall apart, because all of the money that was needed in order to maintain that infrastructure was sucked up by the CRA. The CRA has been hauling dump trucks of taxpayers' money into the pockets of developers for 45 years. A good deal of why the state is in the red, and why this city is in the red, is because the money is at the CRA. Where is the CRA's money right now? And who's gonna get it next? Oh, boy.
Thank you very much. Again, please, quiet in the chamber, Scott Smith, and James Shaw.
I'm with the Union of Medical Marijuana Patients. I'd like to address the myth that most medical marijuana patients are recreational users, and I say that for four reasons. There's only been one study done that shows 80% of the users didn't like the effects of prescription drugs, or found them ineffective, and the proponents that they're recreational users have no studies to cite to support their contention. Secondly, I'm a reporter by background, I know how to do research, and I've talked to a cross-section of patients. I didn't have an opinion on this, but I did talk to many patients, heard a lot of heartrending stories. I would challenge those who say they're recreational users to do the same, and they'll find out differently. Third point, it's often said, young people can't be sick. Well, if you talk to the patients, you'll find young people have a high level of depression, severe insomnia, acute anxiety, and we say that's okay to buy prescription drugs for. Why not let them choose marijuana? Now, a physician's recommendation, which is not a prescription, we would like that system tightened up, as do the critics of our industry, but you have to talk to the California Medical Association about that. The last point is that, you know, weed has been available everywhere in LA forever, long before the medical marijuana industry. So if you're saying that upwards of 95% of the medical marijuana patients are recreational users, what you're saying is that the ban won't work, because they're just gonna go home with their cars, they're gonna grow their pot in every single street, that will create a crime problem, or they're gonna go back to the black market that they used to go to, and that will drive crime up, clearly. And lastly, passing a ban will dramatically increase the litigation risk, and we would urge you to study that problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good day, sir.
Honorable Chair, honorable council members, James Shaw from the Union of Medical Marijuana Patients. Having been a schoolteacher for Los Angeles inner-city schools for 10 years, and also facilitated many after-school programs, I am very proud to be a part of a city that honors programs for youth. I particularly want to recognize our councilman, Buscagno, for his efforts to encourage safety amongst youth by wearing helmets. One of my young friends lost his life when he was bombing on a skateboard without a helmet, so please do encourage our youth to wear helmets. I'm here today, though, to talk about safety for medical marijuana patients, and particularly want to speak briefly to the issue of potential litigation regarding a ban on medical marijuana patient associations. In the next two weeks, our council for the union will submit to city council a draft example of what damages would look like if the city banned patient associations. And then the Supreme Court ruled that cities can't ban patient associations. And the point there is that if the city would put less effort into litigation and more effort into sensible regulation, there's just a couple of small modifications that they could do to their current ordinance, so that it would be effective, and patient advocates and patient associations could agree. We could spend less money on litigation and more money on after-school parks, funding our fire department, funding the other important, needed resources for the city of Los Angeles. And so I submit to you, if the city attorney, or if there's a motion for a ban amongst the city council, that you just vote no on a ban. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We will go over to Van Nuys for next couple of speakers. We have Chuck Hart and Ankar Patel.
No Chuck Hart.
Okay, how about Ankar Patel?
Thank you. To Joe Buscagno, don't get caught up in the sound of your own voice. Most of your colleagues are already there. I do a weekly piece on KPFK. I know some of you council members are familiar, because you've done interviews on that fine radio station where American imperialism is the center. Child soldiers in Africa and the other global issues are what we talk about there, as opposed to the dog and pony show that this city council has become. So Civic Circus every Tuesday between 8:00 and 9:00 a.m. on 90.7. My last piece, I actually did focus on the new council member and the over $500,000 that he received from the Police Protective League and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, powerful unions. Joe Buscano ran his campaign on calling himself the Average Joe. Let's give him a chance. I hope he doesn't turn into another average politician. I am going to be involved in the 2013 elections, and I will have an impact on whichever race I decide to work on. I can still move into one of your districts and run against one of you. Now, you guys do a lot of power brokering. That is really the heart and soul of your position. Henry Marine came up here a little while ago, and he goes off on the memorandum of understanding number 35, and the union contributions, and the way that unions affect, there are a lot of different issues. I don't mean to get off on unions. I actually like union workers, maybe not union bosses, but there's so many other things going on that, you know, two minutes, what can I do with that, right? So again, Civic Circus, going to three-hour meetings so you don't have to, on 90.7 KPFK, Tuesdays, 8:00 a.m.
Thank you very much. We will now go to San Pedro. We do have Chuck Hart in San Pedro, followed by Janet Gunter. Good day. So Chuck Hart? Okay, Janet Gunter?
Good morning, all city council members, and a special welcome to our new city councilman, Joe Buscano. Chuck Hart will be at the end, he's requested to speak at the end. I'm here really to welcome Joe, but also to remind him that one of the most urgent issues in our district is the liquid propane gas tanks that we have in this community at Rancho LPG. We've spoken before, you previously, on this matter, and we want to urge your attendance, or your, your attention to this matter in the most serious way. Our councilwoman, Jan Perry, our LA city councilwoman, Jan Perry, made a motion last November that was, sent this item to the Safety Committee. We urge immediate action on this. We hope that they will also broaden that motion to accept a means of control on this issue, to revoke the renewable permit on the rail that is available to the city and the Port of Los Angeles until a comprehensive risk analysis can be provided that ensures us that the, the risk is acceptable to us, and that the liability to the city and, and the residents is covered in this regard. We have also received, most recently, a report that was commissioned by Jerry Brown from the PUC in 1977. That report, which is amazing, absolutely endorses and embraces every accusation that we've made about this facility. It calls for action. It says that certain things are going to be done and complied with that have never been complied with. We urge your attention to this document, because I think it's of value to you all, and you will understand why we are so frantic about the need to do something about this facility immediately. It's been on a dusty shelf for a lot of years. We need you to pull it out, we need you to respond to it. We urge your attention.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
The other homeowners here will speak soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Connie Rutter and Jody James.
Good morning. My name is Chuck Hart. I'm the current president of the San Pedro Peninsula Homeowners United. I realize it is not, it must be very difficult for the council to make, to take this issue seriously, when you are being advised by a city attorney who has stated in his, is his belief, that this LPG facility is no more dangerous than the corner gas station. The history of LPG events across the nation and the world tells us a different story, and the truth. As our elected representatives, it is your responsibility to learn the whole truth and make decisions accordingly. It is time to deal with the fact that the city has wrongfully allowed this LPG facility to be built next to our homes and schools, allowed soccer fields accommodating hundreds of children to be built next to it, and allows a highly volatile substance to be transported through our port and neighborhood daily. The city continues to prevent new development and housing to be constructed within the perimeter of potential catastrophic event this facility is capable of, capable of creating. Councilman Buscano, congratulations on your appointment. San Pedro Peninsula Homeowners United is looking forward to getting you up to speed quickly on this issue, and we challenge you to jump on your white horse, white horse, and take the lead on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jody James, Bonnie Christensen.
This is Connie Rutter.
Yes, Ms. Rutter, please. Go ahead.
I live about a mile from the Rancho facility, and I didn't think it was any problem until Janet Gunter contacted me. I'm chair of the Holy Trinity Peace and Justice Group, so that's why she contacted me. But it just so happens that I've had like 30 years of experience working in the oil industry, in the, in refineries, first as a environmental manager, and then later as a consultant. And so that's why I thought that this facility had to be safe. But the LPG is inherently unsafe. That is, it can only be kept liquid by chilling it, or and/or by putting it under pressure. And the very fact, if something interrupts that, and it gets released, it immediately flashes, is the term that we use. So it creates a pressure wave to start with, and then as soon as it finds a source of ignition, and there are several places, sources of ignition right on site, in their compressors and flares and so forth, it explodes with tremendous force. So I'm, in following this, I've also found in the API journals that this place does not have enough setback, as is required by the API. In addition, in suggestion for, for how to put out a fire, you cannot put this out. Anything that you would use actually makes the fire worse. So, so I strongly urge that something should be done, and essentially, it should be moved out of the present location. I don't see how it could be made safe. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rutter. We have Jody James, then Bonnie Christensen.
Good morning. My name's Jody James. I'm on the board of the San Pedro Peninsula Homeowners United, also the San Pedro Peninsula Homeowners Coalition, and for three years formerly on the Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council. Very importantly, if you didn't get this from the previous speakers, what pounds my hot button really hard is our homes and schools were here first. I get very upset when I hear people, and even on the city council, claiming that, well, we were foolish people for building our homes next to those huge tanks. We were here first. And when those tanks went in, our people fought it, and our homes were devalued, and our right to feel safe in our own homes was taken away from us. And our new city councilman, Joe Buscano, we've educated him on this issue, and his signs are still all through the town that say, "Put public safety first." I've brought with me the motion that passed in Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council in November of last year, and it's a little long, so I'll read excerpts, but it deals with asking for, at the very least, insurance, which is sort of a proxy for due and evaluation so we know what the hazards to our community are. And I'm also very grateful to Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council for funding a study which was an evaluation of the disaster risk, and they did this two years ago. Let's see, from this motion, it says, "Whereas the city of Los Angeles has a stake, both ethical and financial, in insuring against the potential threats of life, health, loss of business, private, public property, and infrastructure posed to the entire city of Los Angeles from an explosion, fire, or contamination stemming from the Rancho LPG facility." And they're asking for redress, whether or not a special permit to operate the facility should be required.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please address this.
Thank you. Please finish your thought. Yes. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Please address this.
Okay, Bonnie Christensen, Christine Campbell, and then Dr. John G. Miller. Good day, ma'am.
Mr. President, council members, and a special hello to our new councilmember, Joe Buscano. I am an original owner, 1962. There are over 2,000 houses built there before these tanks went in. There were five schools, churches, Kaiser Hospital. Light a little cigarette lighter and see how quickly that lights with this minute amount, and then think 25 million gallons. I have made copies of my deed and other important papers and sent them to relatives outside the state. When these tanks go, so will my home, and so will thousands of people. People forget about the domino effect. They're right there. By Conoco, it's gonna, that's going to go. The Long Beach and Port of Los Angeles is going to go. It will have a tremendous domino effect. It'll take Wilmington. Then I was on for about two years mandated by the government, by the federal government, about risk management. Everybody cooperated, ex on all of the management, except, at that time it was AmeriGas. The Risk Management Plan says children are not taken into account at the schools, because they're, they're not really technically residents. Tell that to the parents of the children of those schools. And they said, Taper Avenue wasn't there, my daughter helped start that school.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Thank you very much. Christine Campbell, and then Dr. John G. Miller.
Hi, my name's Christine Campbell, and I'm kind of Jane Q. Public in this forum. I was a teacher in San Pedro, and I'm a resident of RPV, Rancho Palos Verdes, and I can remember going to, you know, we do disaster preparedness at our schools, and I remember one year, we had a very honest principal who told us she had gone to a meeting saying that, well, you know, if there is a disaster, forget everything you've learned, because you will be obliterated. And I'm sure she was being, referring to this 25 million gallons of butane in the neighborhood, as, and as well as 300,000 gallons of propane. Now, with that amount there, the blast radius is 6.8 miles, if it's isolated. Now, there is not even one mile of radius, that's protective radius around that facility, and we are not isolated, so it would have, what, I think, the domino effect where, you know, that's gonna be the beginning of our problems. So as a member of, as a resident of RPV, our city has weighed in against these tanks, because we will be affected also, even though we are more than six or seven miles away. So I am, another thought that came to me while I was sitting here was that if I was a budding terrorist and knew about this 250 million dollar, 250 million gallon bit of butane, I would think, hmm, LA, I know LA, everybody knows LA, everybody knows what a center it is, what an easy target, you know? I would be, it would be almost like a no-brainer, if possible, to do that. So it's quite a concern in these times, because, you know, who would, who would think that, you know, things have happened that no one predicted in the last years, like New Orleans, whatever, disastrous. Anyway, I'd like to give you the website where you could learn more about it, as I will too.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
It's www.hazardsbegone.com.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dr. John G. Miller.
Good morning. I'm Dr. John G. Miller, San Pedro resident, board-certified emergency physician, lifetime fellow of the American College of Emergency Physicians, and president of the San Pedro and Peninsula Homeowners Coalition. I want to tell you that these tanks at Rancho are a grave hazard to the nearby homes, schools, and Home Depot store. If we have an accident that disrupts these tanks, such as an earthquake on the fault that underlies these tanks, a terrorist attack, or whatever, it will not be a minor event. A single tank car spilled in a tank car of propane, propylene actually, spilled in a campground in Tarragona, Spain in 1978, killed 217 people and had 300 people with grave injuries, many with severe burns. The medical reality of a disaster at this facility and the nearby neighborhood is, is that we simply don't have enough hospital beds and burn beds in Southern California that are available to treat the survivors of this thing. As an emergency physician, I can tell you that even if we have an accident, a multi, multi-burn casualty accident, we have a tough time finding burn beds for four or five critically burned patients. But with this thing, you're going to have several hundred at least critical, critically burned patients, with really, we don't have the, we don't have the surge capacity within the emergency medical system to take care of these people. So I'm urging you to use your powers to remove these tanks before a disaster occurs. You do have the power to do this. It is a grave danger to our community, and this is what you should do. Lastly, hello to our new councilman, Joe Buscano.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Thank you very much. Colleagues, I do want to take a moment to recognize a very important guest, the Assistant Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, Mercedes Marcus. Mercedes, welcome to the council chamber. Please give a big round of applause, a lot of work with the city, housing. Thank you, Mercedes. Good to have you back. Okay, let's come back to Los Angeles. We have Valerie Stewart, Giorgio Abrahams. Please come on up to the microphone. Valerie Stewart, Giorgio Abrahams. Are you in the chamber? Arminag Norjanian? Okay. Yes, ma'am. Give us your name, please.
I'm Candace Graham. Did you say my name?
Not yet.
Okay.
But we do have Valerie Stewart. Is Valerie Stewart here? Valerie Stewart? Good day, ma'am. Please give us your name.
Good day. I'm Valerie Stewart. I'm here to represent the Ebony Showcase Theater and Cultural Arts Center, a nonprofit organization founded by my parents in 1950. The land now is occupied by the Nate Holden Theater. I wanted to say, I'm here to tell you some of the things that the CRA did. I don't know what's going to take place with the CRA, and I don't know what you're gonna do with the property, such as ours that was stolen by the CRA. Rather than thinking I'm ranting and raving and thinking upwards stolen or theft, I want to tell you it was actually stolen by my parents, by, I'm sorry, by the CRA from my parents. We came to a city council hearing in about 1991, after my parents lost title to the property because of city mandated earthquake renovation before the earthquake. The city council then promised my parents and others that they would give them money to restore their properties. Instead, Nate Holden formed a nonprofit called Ebony Showcase Cultural Center. He then diverted money to himself, to the city, and I don't have time to talk about this, so what I'd like to do is to find out, one, what's gonna happen, and to, two, try to get an investigation, so you know what happened and why I'm saying it was stolen. There's not enough time for me to explain it. But that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for somebody in the city council to listen to me, so that I can expose what happened.
What district are you in, ma'am?
I will, I am in six now. It was District 10 that did it. That's not gonna help. I want someone that is not associated with that district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stewart. Giorgio Abrahams? Mr. Abrahams? Okay, we'll move on. Arminag Norjanian? Good day, sir. And then we'll have Candace Graham.
Good morning, city council members. Good morning, fellow Argyleans. My name is Arminag Norjan, and I am a liberal Democrat and a humanist advocate. I proudly announce my campaign, you know, to run for the seat of California State Assembly. I proudly announce my campaign, you know, to run for the seat of California State Assembly for this year, June 15 election. I promise to raise taxes against wealthy individuals and rich and oil producers and gasoline selling corporations 50% in order to remedy budget deficit. In California, create more jobs, the government ordered, it's been always Californian tradition. As a Californian, build satellites, space satellites, for federal government can build space satellites for the state government as well, on orders state government. I propose to create California satellite cell phone service for rural and forest areas, territorial waters of California shores. I also will create state legislation to control car jams on California highways and freeways and clog the far fast with live satellite surveillance in order to disperse those car jams. I also propose establish six month free pregnancy leave at the expense of state government in order to reduce the incidence of disease of newly born. And also propose to raise speed limit on California highways and freeways from 65 miles per hour to 85 miles per hour for light trucks, cars, trucks, and vans in order to promote business systems of motorists. And also, also propose to make same-sex marriage law of the land, uphold civil rights of sexual minorities. Also propose to establish a ban or prohibition on, for, on the sale of so-called medical marijuana. As 56% of California voters rejected proposition 19 last year, according to MSNBC sources report, and actually, those medical marijuana dispensers, they rip off their customers, they rob them clean, you know, they were extremely expensive prices, and actually, they refused pay any taxes, and many people who I've seen was medical marijuana clients, you know, lost their all life savings, lost warehouses, became homeless, just because city government wants to violate United States Controlled Substances Act and want to sell dope in the streets of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Candace Graham, Ronald Murphy, Carlos Etcheverria. Ms. Graham.
Hi, thank you guys for having me here. It's always enlightening when I do come. I'm here in congratulating you and congratulating Jerry for basically burying the CRA at this particular point in time. When I ran for city council with Buscano, I love you all, you do know this, and I have a lot of respect, but it's time to make money, not print money. And by eliminating the CRA and you're eliminating, not only that, you're eliminating attacks because we have so many, and we have to tighten our belt still yet. We have so many things that aren't working in our government that maybe, maybe we've been sitting too long. And that was actually why I ran for city council. Ms. Valerie Stewart, what she was saying was that how can you tell a rattlesnake that it's not a rattlesnake if you're dealing in the same district? She feels that it's self-interest investment for, to come out of the 10th district to say, "Well, you're wrong about yourself to investigate yourself." Her father was nominated and congratulated by the Academy of Arts. He was actually the original and one of the top icons of the 1940s of the Amos and Andy television show, which, you know, took a lot and actually killed him by dealing with the CRA. So whenever I come in front of you, I'm coming in front of you because something's not working. When I ran for city council, I was running for city council because we're not working. The city, the state is not working. Maybe you guys should take a little interest in Buscano, sweetie. Congratulations. I'm so happy for you, but hold on, I'm not over.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, you are. Thank you. Ronald Murphy and Carlos? Mr. Murphy?
Hello, my name is Ronald, Ronald Murphy, and I live in Playa del Rey in Mr. Rosendahl's district. And I'm simply here to tell you how safe access to medical marijuana has helped me personally. And I was involved in a rollover car accident there on Pershing Drive in 1996. And I'm a Southern California guy, born and raised. And I received numerous orthopedic injuries, including a left leg amputation, pelvic fracture, double hip replacements, femur fracture, and on and on and on. I was in a wheelchair in a nursing home for 16 months where I unfortunately became dependent on morphine prescription painkillers and so forth because of the pain, obviously. Couldn't be helped. Cannabis has helped me to beat these dependencies and their negative side effects, which kind of make you debilitated, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of thinking and so forth, vicodin. Anyway, I do not drive anymore, so it's essential to me that the dispensary within walking distance of my residence remains open. And if not, I will have no choice but to go back on painkillers again and deal with their negative side effects, which are much worse than cannabis and hard to actually function on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mickey Jackson, John Walsh, and I think this is Shor Stoneman, or is that Sherry Stoneman? From La Mita? Go on, sir.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Carlos Etcheverria, and I've been a legal medical marijuana patient from the state of Cal, in the state of California for nearly two years now, and I have benefited greatly from the herbal therapy that has helped to relieve some of the occasional aches and soreness that have been lingering in my surgically repaired left ankle for the past few years. Although my ailment may not be as grave compared to the medical marijuana patients who suffer from AIDS, cancer, and other life-threatening diseases and injuries such as Ron, I believe that the so-called war on drugs has distracted local, state, and federal governments in this country from resolving the real detrimental problems and issues that are currently plaguing us, such as the economy, healthcare, education, the environment, and the slow dismantling of our democracy. Conservatives who have been constantly demonizing and criminalizing a harmless plant that has existed on this planet long before this nation was founded has proven to all Americans that their war on marijuana policies has become nothing more than a futile misadventure that has resulted in wasted time, energy, money, and most importantly, the destruction of innocent lives, all because they disagree with people who want the freedom to use marijuana peaceably and legally, whether it's for medical purposes or simply for personal recreation. The constant fear-based propaganda from conservatives who claim that they're out to protect children from the vile dangers and indecency of the underground head shops of the 60s and 70s to the legal dispensaries of today is outdated and laughable as the 1930s cult film Reefer Madness, and it must be done away with. Why? Because there has never been any recorded evidence that anyone who used marijuana died from an overdose, other than getting headaches, glassy eyes, cotton mouth, and gaining a few extra pounds from the constant munchies. Similar to the prohibition of alcohol nearly a century ago, the prohibition of marijuana has once again reminded us that people's personal vices shouldn't be criminalized as long as it doesn't harm others. And just because marijuana is legal like it is now, doesn't mean that it's an invitation for young kids to come use it after they get out of school. Trying to ban marijuana is like trying to stop the raindrops from falling from the cloudy sky. Why should we, the medical marijuana recipients, go back to the dreaded days of the black market and venture to some stranger's home and risk the dangers of being robbed or worse? Conservative politicians should admit failure and allow marijuana to be legal once and for all. Drug usage and abuse is a public issue, public health issue, not an...
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. We do have Mickey Jackson and John Walsh, and I'd like to, on the advice of the city attorney, like to just present your artwork.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. This is the CRA clawing its way out of the grave to get its money back.
Drop dead CRA day. Have a nice day.
Nice day. Thank you.
Thank you for the First Amendment.
Well, thank you very much for the artwork.
Or maybe it's the First Amendment clawing its way back out of it.
It's here now, so thank you very much. All right. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd, and then Arnold Sacks.
Thank you. Yes, of course, welcome Joe Buscano too. And you can tell there's problems, there were problems in that district because it shows either how ineffective Janice Hahn was for the constituents, because all of a sudden, we're seeing people from San Pedro and a bunch. So they, obviously, they're under this illusion that he's gonna do something about that. So I've got news for them. If Janice Hahn didn't do it, no one's gonna do it. I hope. Matt Dowd, of course, you can fight City Hall. That's me, I've got the calendars coming out too, because you're not allowed anything with utility at Venice Beach. And the dominant utility of a calendar is to tell the date, but it's fairly expressive, this one. So what I'm trying to do is settle the case. Herb Weston's working on it for me. And I did depositions with some attorneys uptown here. But what I want to do with the settlement money, I want to go to Richard Alacon's district, I want to lease some land, I want to, I want to breed asses. I want to have an ass farm, not mules, not donkeys, but asses. Why? Because I can keep them in a big old hedged, big old hedged paddock. And when I want to let them out, I'm gonna tear a hole for the asses to come out. It's an asshole. I'm gonna tear it in the hedge, and they're gonna come out, and I'm gonna bring them down here to city council.
Sit down, please. We talking about the corum and disrupting the meeting? We don't appreciate it. Watch your language, please.
It's the First Amendment, I'm entitled to it.
This is about disrupting the meeting, sir.
Now, this is not a question...
You're disrupting the meeting, please.
Down here, one of my asses that I bred as a gift, and before I hand it to you, I'm gonna kick it. I'm gonna kick your ass before I hand it to you. And that's protected under the First Amendment, right? See, these are the problems you're getting into. You already interrupted these people, and then you had to give them back time, and then you had to let them have the sign, the little display thing, just like mine. Thank you very much. Get a grip, hey, my time was... Thank you very much.
Again, disrupting, that's a second warning. We don't appreciate that language. Watch, you're disrupting, you have to leave now. Disrupting the meeting, using that kind of language, that's not appreciated, disruptive to the audience as well. Mr. Sacks.
Actually, before Mr. Sacks begins, Mr. Dowd is still disrupting the meeting as he's walking out.
He is still disrupting the meeting as he's walking out. Do you need to understand that? Mr. City Attorney?
For the record, Mr. Dowd was still disrupting the meeting as an audience member as he was walking out. And so Mr. Sacks should be given his two minutes now.
Okay. Mr. Sacks got two minutes?
Oh, thank you, sir. Very quickly, I really didn't want to say, wasn't gonna say anything about the presentation regarding the gentleman who donated his time and money for the skateboards, but when he requested that, he asked the question, if he did everything that he could, my suggestion to him would be, "No, you didn't. Why don't you look into the Quimby funds that the city collects that are supposed to be used to develop parks in all the council districts? Why don't you take your statue as a film person in TV and ask the councilmen why there's not any use of the Quimby funds in all their districts to build the skateboard parks that they so desperately need, just out of curiosity? Then you might be able to say, 'Then I've done everything I can.'" That being said, it was an interesting article in the Daily Breeze on the 27th. Redevelopment Panel Goes Out of Business. In San Pedro, the Pacific Corridor Committee, Community Advisory Committee went out of business because the redevelopment agencies have been eliminated. The money's been transferred for another use by the state, another money grab. That being said, how many other advisory committee are there in the other communities? How many, is there an advisory committee in the Hollywood section? Is there advisory committee in the downtown section? Is there advisory committee over by where the, the new parking garage is going in for the museum? How many other advisory committees are there in building-rich San Pedro? That being said, I got a word, since Janice Hahn not here, and you're gonna be doing budget discussions, and she won't be able to talk about the gift shop. Two words: fatheads. If you're looking, this week's Los Angeles Downtown News, there's a great picture.
Thank you very much.
Fathead.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk? Where are we right now? Is it item one?
Yes, sir, we have item one, called Special For Cards.
Okay. We do have the chairperson for the committee, Councilman Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. We had a comprehensive hearing yesterday, and I appreciate Mr. Nichols and his diligence and his patience. And I voted no, but the other members of the committee did vote yes. And I do want to acknowledge Mr. Nichols' very, very diligent work and the work of PA Consulting and the recognition that we do have a ratepayer advocate now on board. I also understand there's a need for an interim rate adjustment associated with current water quality needs, and there is a recognition on my part, even though I'm not the chair anymore, and I said thank you to everybody yesterday too, that the department will come back to the council in the future to ask for additional rate adjustments. And some point during the conversation today, you may want to ask Mr. Nichols to come to the table and tell you what the timeline is or schedule for future rate adjustments. But the reason I voted no, and I'd like to say this on the record, ratepayers need to know that the department has looked at all alternatives to meet compliance, and we need to be able to answer the ratepayers on what we've done to reduce operations and maintenance costs and what proposed future rate increases we will have, and how our reserves will be impacted by these rate increases. Our budget will be reviewed for 2011, 2012, and then it will include a detailed breakdown of operations and maintenance. I wish that we could have the new ratepayer advocate review this request. Obviously, there's an ongoing need for infrastructure maintenance and development, and that is very essential to the ongoing economic development and viability of the city of Los Angeles. So to ask for a periodic rate increase for structural soundness and quality of infrastructure is appropriate, but we also have to exercise principles of sound management of public funds. It's also appropriate for the Department of Water and Power to commence the process of beginning to control structural costs associated with employment and operational costs. And as council members, I think we need to show them that we can support them in that and not act out of fear. Uncontrolled structural employment costs don't provide any assurance to the public that their precious funds are being managed to the best of our ability. So I'm gonna say this, because I don't believe I can get a second on this motion, so I'm gonna put these thoughts out here on the record, and I'll pursue it through other avenues. Prior to the adoption of any rate increase, the department, any future rate increase, the Department of Water and Power must secure control over its structural employment costs. For example, retiring inactive healthcare, and of course, the creation of additional pension tier for people who have not yet been hired. And for those reasons, I am going to vote no today, and I talked to Mr. Nichols about this in advance, so there are no surprises. I have the utmost respect for him and the work that he's done, but I feel that it's important to put this on the record and see what we can do as a legislative body to support the Department of Water and Power so they can achieve the structural changes so that we can make the strongest and most compelling case to the ratepayers that we have done everything that we absolutely could to reduce internal costs, make a pension system that is sustainable within the department, and move forward in an honest and forthright manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Chair, I did want to ask you, do you want to move towards public comment or continue the discussion? But we do have three more councilmen on the queue.
I think you should let the members talk and then go to public comment.
Okay. Okay, Madam Chair, so we will go to Councilman Gardenas, then Councilman Corretts, then followed by Councilman Zine.
Actually, Council President, I was assuming that the staff would make a presentation first, and then we would resume the dialogue after that.
Let's have a presentation. Mr. Nichols, if you will, please provide us a summary of where we're at, what's on the, in front of us as policymakers, and then we can go to the queue.
Mr. President, pardon me before doing so, I'd just like to announce that in conjunction with the 218 hearing related to the DWP rate action, 463 protests have been filed with the clerk's office pursuant to the applicable provision. This does not constitute a majority protest.
Okay, so we will hold your time, Councilman Gardenas, and let him do his presentation. We'll give you back the time allotted to you, which would be the three minutes. Mr. Nichols?
Thank you very much. You have before you a copy of what's also up here on the screen. And just as a brief reminder, last, last summer, there was, we had some 30-plus public sessions that was part of a full rate review on, on our water rates, our power rates as well, and addressing... addressing many of the types of requirements that we have. I want to focus here today simply on one single, but very critical component of those that we discussed last summer. And unfortunately, it is an item that time for commitment to that requires us to be talking about it here today. I'll take a few minutes to explain what the dollars are that are needed for these programs. It relates to our safe drinking water capital requirements and what it means to customers' bills, why now, and then give a little bit of overview of what comes next. We are, we have a major drink, safe drinking water quality compliance program that we're working through. It's a U.S. EPA-established standard for our drinking water enforced by the California Department of Public Health. And the reason that we're here today talking with you about this is that we have a current structure has a component in our rates for water quality factor. And it has in that a cap and then a quarterly cap. In fact, every six, we can't go up more than six cents per quarter. We are topped out right now. That six cent per quarter cap is not allowing us to recover the current costs that we have in our water quality program, and it certainly doesn't allow us to commit to more. We have in the next nine months, we will be committing to nearly $600 million in capital costs to comply with specific projects that have been worked over for a long period of time as part of a compliance plan with the California Department of Public Health. The very first one of those that we need to move on will be roughly $200 million worth that we have to act on within the next 60 days. And that's why we're here today. We don't have the funds to do it, and we don't believe it's at all prudent to go to commit to a major expenditure for which we don't have revenue to cover. And this list up here shows the projects. It's principal, this first project is our Headworks Reservoir. It's the new reservoir that allows us to take out of service the Silver Lake Reservoir complex and bypass that. We will be making very quickly on the heels of that improvements to the L.A. Reservoir as well as other bypass projects, all of which are solely for the purpose of complying with water quality requirements. The specific proposal is to add a 35 cent per 100 cubic feet. That's our billing unit is 100 cubic feet. Our average customer uses around 1,200 cubic feet per month and to eliminate the six cent per quarter cap that we have right now in our water quality factor. So, we would increase as well. That takes care of, we have our two tiers. We have our Tier One customers and our Tier Two customers who are higher users. We would also change the Tier Two base by that 35 cents. It's a little complicated issue, but bottom line, it ends up having very, very close, similar adjustments of that 35 cents to our customers, whether you're a Tier One user or you're a Tier Two user. That will give us, if we get this in effect this month, if we get this moving forward in effect 30 days out, we would get about $39 million this year and $79 million in the next fiscal year. That funds all of the costs of this roughly between $550 and $600 million of capital costs that we're looking to make commitments to. Effectively, we would basically, we will pay the mortgage for the debt that we have to issue for those projects. And so, I'd like to talk briefly about the, what's this mean for our average customer bills? And what I'm going to provide you here is a comparison of next year's rates, fiscal year 12, 13 versus last year's rates. And the reason I'm comparing next year's to last year is because we're actually have been seeing abnormally lower rates. People may not have noticed, but every quarter for the last four quarters, your water rates have been coming down, and that's because we had an outstanding water year last year. It's not looking like we're having a back-to-back one, unfortunately. And we do all of our projections based on what is an average year going forward. So, this would, for our average customer bill, this component of the 35 cent factor is about $1.71 per month, or it's a little under 3% between fiscal year 11 and fiscal year 13 for our water bills. Program, just to be clear, this isn't the end of our obligations for our water quality compliance program. This takes us again through the commitments that we need to make basically in the next nine months, pretty much through this calendar year. There will be additional costs for that program. We have about, this is a little over half of that total program. It gets stretched out over several additional years. We'll be coming back when we do a full water rate case to look at those actions and at that time, give you a full story with respect to that. Most of that was discussed last summer as part of our full rate consideration. So, just to be clear again, the action that's before you today is a 35 cent adjustment for our water quality factor, eliminating our six cent cap and a modification to our Tier Two water rates that provides Tier One and Tier Two both effectively paying that 35 cent cap. Going to skip this next page, I think it's, I want to give you a quick view of how our customers' water costs are changing. This graph that you have before you on the left-hand side just shows what our average, what our rates are that change month by month. We have a number of factors that adjust up and down each month. Our average last year was about $3.83 per 100 cubic feet. The red line that you see to the right on the current year rates shows what would happen if we did, if we were able to do no rate action, that is, if we were able to ignore our obligation to meet these water quality compliance programs. As you'll see, it's gone down materially because of that purchased water. It will start going up again, as it shows on here, with an anticipated more normal water year. The blue line on the top is simply that incremental 35 cent cap, and that takes us to an average system rate of $3.59, which actually is lower all in than last year's rate, although higher than it would be if we didn't take this action. That's the only action we're looking here today. We will be coming back to you. We'll be kicking things off. We need to work through timing. Now that the council, very pleased that the council has approved and confirmed Fred Pickle as our ratepayer advocate, we'll be working with him directly to lay out a timeframe, but we'll be back to talk about some modifications for future years' water quality funding for our additional pipeline replacement. And then, while it's a small increase, a very important one that we'll be talking with you about on incremental water conservation measures, additional reclaimed water, stormwater capture, and saving our groundwater resources that we can use, so all of which go towards reducing our reliance on imported water for Los Angeles. In addition, I know there's been some discussion about the, about the timing of this relative to the ratepayer advocate. We fully anticipate that the ratepayer advocate will review this plan as part of the overall rate case. We'll, we'll expect, I'm expecting that we're going to be starting a public review of that in March. It will take several months. And he'll be looking at our whole water quality program, all of our other water rates and system costs, and he'll be looking at this matter before, if, we're not anticipating there's something there that is inappropriate, but if there's some adjustment that he believes through an independent review needs to be considered, there's opportunity for that consideration. This allows us, action today, however, allows us to start the contracts that we need to start at the end of March to make certain that we're not out of compliance with the California Department of Public Health. You'll note in your packets that there has been significant support for this action. The Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils, the Central City Association, the L.A. Chamber of Commerce, the Youth Policy Institute, San Fernando Valley Green Team have supported this. Two of the members of the Executive Neighborhood Council, Jack Humperville and Tony Wilkinson, both came out at our board, when our board took action on this in December, in support of this portion of the rate adjustment. And there have been positive supportive editorials with both the L.A. Times and the Daily News as it pertains to the water quality factor. That's before you here today. I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. So, we'll start on the queue again, and we'll start with Councilman Gardenas, followed by Councilman Coetz and Councilman Zine. Councilman Gardenas.
Thank you very much, Council President. I appreciate all the effort and work that has gone into this. I'd like to clarify for my colleagues' edification. This matter of the water quality factor, you attempted to approach the council quite some time ago about this, but being that it was in the works that the voters are going to vote on a ratepayer advocate, et cetera, and since they did, we didn't know exactly how long it was going to take to get one in place. Have you been holding off some time to bring this forward?
We've been holding off since last summer to do this and have pushed back everything as far as we can until such time that we're here today.
Exactly. And I just want to remind my colleagues, the Department of Water and Power doesn't have any, did not or doesn't have any control as to what the timing was to get the ratepayer advocate on board. So, I just wanted to put the things into perspective. It's not that the department is trying to sneak this in right before the ratepayer advocate is fully on board. This is something that, because of just the practical nature of how to run the department and how to address the requirements and the needs of other authorities that could find us and find us noncompliant, which would cost our ratepayers even more money, this is the reason why we're here now. One of the things I'd like to thank the department, I've been on the committee that oversees the Department of Water and Power since I've been on the council for nine years now, and I chaired that committee for the first four years, and I can say that this is the first time I've ever seen a head of this department be so open and transparent and willing to actually speak to the council and speak to the entire community of Los Angeles and/or anybody who wanted to listen. So, I want to thank you for doing it in that manner. And on that note, do you have any letters of support from organizations that I may be surprised that they would actually support any kind of rate increase? Do you have any on record?
We do, and in your packets, we have record letters of support from Central City Association, from the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, from the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils, from the San Fernando Valley Green Team, as well as letters of support from the Youth Policy Institute, which is a nonprofit organization that is working for disadvantaged youth.
And also, just so that we understand, is there an organization called PA Consulting and what has been their involvement on their opinion of this particular matter?
Yes, PA Consulting is an independent consultant that's retained by council, City Council, to review and works through the Energy and Environment Committee, has separately reviewed all of our rate proposals and have been reviewing this since last summer. They specifically looked at the water quality factor, and last Friday, they submitted an independent report to the council for this purpose. And they have, they reviewed it and they have concurred with the reasonableness of our action.
That concludes the time. Councilman, please.
Thank you for your thoroughness. You used up my whole three minutes, but I do appreciate the information. Just one last point before we go on to the next council member. Could you please point out if you can explain to us how the lowest income users and the lowest water users in our city may be impacted? Because you gave us an average of $1.71 per month.
Right.
This would impact, but I think it's important that we put into perspective, that $1.71 isn't necessarily our low-income senior household, that's our average household.
Thank you, Councilman Gardenas.
So, with that, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Correctly, our lower income in seniors in single-family homes typically use more, like about 1000 cubic feet per month, lower than the average. And as a result for them, it's about a dollar and 14 cent monthly increase compared to 2010, 11.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols and colleagues. Just to keep it in context, the three minutes includes the question and the answers, so I want to make sure that's clear. Councilman Coetz and then Councilman Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, to be honest, I think this whole issue should have gone to the new ratepayer advocate for review. Now, I pledged to my community that I would not vote for a rate increase until the ratepayer advocate was on board. Technically, he is, although I'm not sure, coming on board the day before was what anybody had in mind. Unfortunately, I think DWP has a very tight timeline to comply with a number of federal requirements, and I recognize that. And I do also commend Mr. Nichols for being very open and transparent and doing a good job since he's been here. What I'm particularly concerned about is the wording of the resolution adopted by the board that states the department desires not to enact any further rate increases until they're analyzed by the ratepayer advocate. I'd like to get a clearer commitment that the board and the department doesn't just desire, but that they actually will not bring us a broader restructuring of the rates until it actually has been fully reviewed by the ratepayer advocate. And so, I'd like to ask Mr. Nichols and any representatives from the board if they feel they can make that commitment.
I can certainly make that commitment on behalf of myself, and I believe that our board has been on record. If there's any ambiguity about that, I'm quite certain that our board is on record that, that any further rate adjustments beyond what we're talking about here today will indeed be fully reviewed and become before the ratepayer advocate, before this council has to take an action on it and anticipate that it will be before, even before our board takes a final action, they will have the results of ratepayer advocate. And just to put a clear point on it, we do anticipate the ratepayer advocate will indeed review what is before you here today as part of that overall package as well.
And one other question, did you and the board look at the alternative that would have allowed the ratepayer advocate time to take a look at this of paying for these expenses out of your reserves and then using the rates to pay that back?
Well, let me answer that in two ways. We certainly, we looked at the prospect of whether we could wait until the ratepayer advocate reviewed it and determined that there was, there was no way that he could go through a review and we could meet our notice requirements for the effective date of it and have any assurance of any incremental revenue before such time that we had to make a $200 million commitment to capital. And we do not have the dollars in our reserves right now to pay for that without assurance of it being replenished, absent having very deleterious effects on our financial performance. So, we just felt it would be just, I felt, I made the recommendation to our board. Jim McDaniel is head of the water system and Ann Santilli is at the time our interim CFO, I believe that there is just no way that we could hold off and put that issue at risk.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Thank you, Councilman Coetz. We have six more speakers on the queue. Our next speaker is Councilmember Zine.
Thank you. Ron, we met, discussed with you and your staff, and like Mr. Coetz, I committed to my constituents that I would not approve any increase until ratepayer advocate was in place and reviewed them. So, I want to live by the commitment that I made. People are very skeptical. They're very skeptical of what we do, what we say, and the action that's taken. Water in the City of Los Angeles has been going on for many, many years. The federal government comes in with new standards, new changes. Those reservoirs have been there. The areas that you're talking about updating for whatever reason, it's because standards have changed. But for all the years, and I'm a native of this city, I've been drinking this water for my whole life. I haven't had any health problems in my entire life here in the City of Los Angeles. All of a sudden, people get suspicious, say, all of a sudden, it has to be done right now. We've had the water here, we've had these reservoirs, we've been using this for many, many years, 220-some years. All of a sudden, we have to get this done at this moment's notice when the ratepayer advocate's not in place to review it. Residential customers, how does this affect the business customers?
Well, the 35 cent gets applied to all customers. It just becomes a function of how many 100 cubic feet.
So, because it says typical residential customers, residential and business then?
It is correct.
So, business will be paying additional along with residential.
Correct.
And we know that businesses are already struggling to try and break even. You talk about the push to get this done now. I don't see, since- I don't see, since we've been using this system in place for the water, we're not talking about breaking water pipes, we're talking about our reservoirs to update them, improve them, whatever the issue is, that if we were to wait for the ratepayer advocate, we would be honest by telling the community that voted for the ratepayer advocate that, you know what, ratepayers reviewed this and we support this on those grounds. It, it just seems we approved a man yesterday and all of a sudden today, we're saying we're going to jack up the rate. It seems disingenuous, to be honest with you. I trust you, I trust your integrity, but the community of Los Angeles is very, very skeptical. I think just leads into this skepticism to say, what are they trying to pull? And, and that's the concern I have. And then Ms. Perry with her comments regarding the contracts, et cetera, that's another factor obviously you have to deal with, which is another issue regarding the dollars. So if you could just explain the urgency and why this can't wait until we can analyze this thoroughly, until we can have the ratepayer advocate make the recommendation, maybe it's going to be forty cents, maybe it's going to be twenty-five cents, but the urgency now, since we've been using the same system to collect water and distribute for years. Take it away.
Yeah, this is Jim McDaniel, Senior Assistant General Manager for Department of Water and Power Water System. Councilman, the, the urgency of this stems back from a compliance agreement that we entered into with the California Department of Public Health back in 2009. In 2009, the, one of the rules that's part of the Safe Drinking Water Act became effective, and that's the enhanced surface water treatment rule. And that rule requires that open bodies of water that contain treated drinking water not be open to, to the air. Currently, with the number of these reservoirs we have, we have drinking water that's already been treated, it's been purified to the highest state, and then we're putting it out in a reservoir that's exposed to the air, birds are free to land on the reservoir, and then we have to add additional chlorine to disinfect the water to make sure it's clean. Those types of processes are no longer accepted as acceptable industry standards, and it's being regulated by the EPA. So this doesn't come to something that we just made this decision recently. When we agreed, because we weren't going to meet the deadline in 2009, we had to enter into a compliance agreement in order to get an extension of time, we had to agree to date certain for each of the reservoirs that were out of compliance at that time to be in compliance, and we're up against those dates right now.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman Zine. Our next speaker, Councilman Zine, that was the three minutes. Next speaker.
I was gonna.
That was, that's it. Press your button, please. Councilman Labange.
Thank you. This is a lot to do with infrastructure, right?
Yes, sir.
And the delivery of water. And we're in process with a line that came all the way across the San Fernando Valley on Van Owen, I believe, and then it's supposed to come down the Woodall Highway and connect to what is the area by Forest Lawn, which used to be the spreading bases, now known as the headworks.
Right.
And the continuing work that you've done for the last maybe ten years of pipe, ninety-six-inch pipelines, Mr. Zine, of bringing water in that is to be quality water. Now, I also understand too, and there's a lot of these, these all stop right now, we need to fund them. I also understand too, that in this situation, the Environmental Protection Agency said there's particles in the air, and the particles in the air go into our open water, we can't have open water anymore. Is that correct?
It's, it has more to do with the, the byproducts of disinfection. As I said, in order to maintain the safety of the water supply, we have to add a lot of chlorine to the, the water to keep it disinfected, and that, that ends up creating these byproducts of disinfection, which are regulated contaminant.
All that, and there's someone checks that every day, because water quality is the key. Also, I do keep a bill in my desk here, and I looked it up, and I checked with your financial people over there, the bill, my wife Bridgette and I, for two months, it's about $65 for water. We don't have lawn in our house, and the rate possibly could be anywhere from five to six dollars of an increase for the infrastructure, which is so important. Members, I would just stand, and I know we just did select our new ratepayer advocate. You did mention the big major newspapers and community groups. You did mention Jack Humphreyville. Jack, just stand up. This is a guy who is, who has advocated for the people on issues like this, and for him to stand up for water and power, it means something, that he reviewed it, he's that. Thank you, Jack. So I would just say right now, at this time, we must go forward because of infrastructure will stop. And these streets are opened up now, they're opened up, and they're trying to put the pipes in, and then we got to hold off for a while? I think it's important that we do this. So I ask for an eye vote for the good of quality water that's going to serve all the city of Los Angeles. And I do believe when we had our Dr. Pickle here yesterday, excuse me, Dr. Pickle, when he was here yesterday, when he spoke, I think if he felt, because he's been watching this too, he's a constituent of the fourth, a very good advocate for community, I think he would have voiced that concern as this transition comes. And your commission reviewed it and many others, so I call for an eye vote. But before I say, sit down, Ed, I also ask you diligently work the way to solve the issues in Allegiant Park and the reservoir. Find a way to solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I was sitting down. Okay. All right, Councilman Weisar and Councilman Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. And you know, it's not easy for elected officials to vote to increase rates. All we ask for is that we have before us a well-thought-out plan, that there's been community input, stakeholder involvement, and that you give us not only what we're voting on, but the full picture of what we have to do. I see that happening here. It's very different from what happened a few months back when this council was very agitated and uncomfortable moving forward with some proposed increases. And this feels a lot better to move forward with an understanding and a full vetting of this issue, not only within these four walls, but out in the community. And that's what we're asking for. On the issue of the ratepayer advocate, I understand, and you're reminding us, that there will be proposed water fee increases in the future, but that ratepayer advocate will not only look at those, but will come back, take this one into account, so that although we were late in finally hiring a ratepayer advocate, that advocate will have some time to come back and look at this. And I think we have legal obligations, we want to continue getting our infrastructure that we need. It's most, it costs us more to have deferred maintenance, to have an emergency take place. This is thinking ahead. And when you look at what the city of L.A. and its residents are pairing to other large cities, it's reasonable, we're not asking for a whole lot. Like I started with, it's not easy to, to vote for these things, but I think this is part of our obligation to move forward and do the best thing for the residents of the city of Los Angeles. And I think at the end of the day, it's going to be a lot cheaper for us to go forward with this proposal today than if we wait and do nothing. The one area I am concerned is how we treat and how we work with our low-income residents. Mr. Nichols, you weren't here at the time, but there was a time when I asked for a report on our Lifeline program, and I was very disappointed as to the type of information this council received, who was eligible, and the fact that we discovered that we gave less of a break to our low-income residents than other large agencies similar to ours. So we moved forward and we increased the percentage of what we give a break to our residents. And I would ask that as we move forward, not only today, but in future proposals, that we keep in mind the low-income residents and, and have the information available to the public, just as we're doing here, we expect the same type of transparent, open, and, and up-to-date information for our Lifeline program. We have a lot of work to do in that area. Now, to be clear again, and my time is running out, how will this impact anybody who is part of the Lifeline program?
Well, we currently have, our, our Lifeline program will continue. We have about, what, 75,000 of our water customers are on that overall, totally getting back to your overall comment on the Lifeline program. We have between water and power combined, pushing up against now 300,000 customers. We've been adding a lot more, working to get more of them in the system. They will continue to get the discount, but they do, they, they will see this, this increase after that discount.
Thank you, Councilman Zine. Please press your button again. Next speaker is Councilman Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to revisit this issue of the ratepayer advocate's review for a moment, because it is, is it not true that this proposal is part of a likely larger infrastructure proposal that will include not only water quality, but water delivery and some of the other infrastructure replacement needs that the department is going to have for water in the coming generations?
Yes, that's true.
All right. So when the ratepayer advocate has the opportunity to review that larger proposal, the bonding capacity that will be available for that is going to be impacted by what we do today on this proposal. Is that also correct?
Well, it will be, we'll, we'll looking at the total commitment that we're making on additional obligations on top of what we're approving here today. Yes, you'll have the total effect of our existing costs, the costs here, plus any incremental costs that come from those future, future actions that you, that you mentioned, and we will have to evaluate the entire bonding capability and the total rate requirement for that full package.
So consequently, if this proposal moves forward today, and if subsequently, the ratepayer advocate has the opportunity to review this proposal and finds that maybe it was a bit too high, or maybe it wasn't supported in its entirety, the ratepayer advocate would have the opportunity to incorporate those findings into the larger findings, and this council could then adjust the larger package to, to make up for whatever deficiency there may be.
Absolutely correct, yes.
Okay. So while we're not getting it in the exact chronological order, the, the net impact of that will be that in fact, the ratepayer advocate will review this proposal, will opine on it, and this council will be able to act based on that ratepayer advocate's finding on this proposal, correct?
Yes, you articulated that much better than I did, Councilman.
Great, thank you. Now, I'd like for a moment, if you could just talk about the department's outreach efforts with regard to this proposal. Specifically, is it correct that a notice was provided in ratepayers' bills? If so, how many of those notices went out? How many responses did the department get relating to this proposal? What sort of direct outreach in the forms of town halls and so on did the department do before this? And then, since my time's running out, in addition to the answers to those questions, the other thing that I'd like you to spend a moment more on is, is to talk about what would be the, the consequences if the federal standards could not timely, the federal water quality standards could not timely be met? What would be the consequences to the department and to ratepayers if we were not to meet those obligations?
Let me take those in reverse order. We could be subject to fines of $25,000 per day, per violation, and we're dealing with covering, covering or bypassing five reservoirs through this, through this process. So those can add up to be millions of dollars. In terms of getting the notice out, we got the notices out.
In October.
Right.
To all customers through part of our 218 process.
And we had some 400 responses back on that.
So after notice went out to all of the ratepayers of Los Angeles, you got 400, correct?
Councilman Krikorian, thank you very much. Next speaker. Councilman Buscayeno.
Thank you, Council President. Members, it's, you know, here I am, my first day, and you're asking me to approve a water rate hike. Thank you very much. But nonetheless, I too was skeptical at first to approve this without the ratepayer advocate in place. The fact that we just appointed him, or this body appointed him yesterday, and here we are, asking for a rate hike. But I also get the urgency and the importance of moving forward. To me, public safety is critical, and I want to ask you, Mr. Nichols, explain to me the potential security concerns if we leave our water reservoirs uncovered. And two, how much will D W P be fined if their goals are not met? I just, I want numbers. I know we're talking about we're going to be fined by the federal government.
Right.
But if you could just give me some specific numbers?
Well, on, on, with respect to the numbers, we would be fined by the California Department of Public Health, I believe with the full support of the, of the U.S. EPA. And that could be, as I said, 25, could be $25,000 per day, per violation. And these are, these, these could be day after day, month after month of fines until such time that we've met the requirements.
Got it. And I understand there was some, there will be more rates that will, or increasing rates that will be on our, our desk here in the coming months that I'm, I'm, I'm sure that we'll have the, the ratepayer advocate to be those eyes and ears for us. But I'm, I'm thinking that when it comes to water quality, and it comes to public safety and also public health, I think about my kids, I want to make sure that we do have good water flowing through the city of Los Angeles. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Buscayeno. Our next speaker is Councilman Rosendale, Councilman Perry, and then Councilman Gardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joe, it's good to see you doing, doing your interaction here. Welcome aboard. Look, I mean, in between, rocking a hard place on this issue. We hired a rate advocate, Frederick Pickle, two months, he said he could get this act together and understand it. Why can't we wait two months?
Well, I wish, believe me, if we could wait two months, Councilman, we would be, we would be waiting two months.
So who's threatening you that you have to do it now?
Well, it's, I don't know if I would call it a, a threat, it's, right, actually it is.
It is.
It's the requirement of the California Department of Public Health, and to that end, just last fall, we sought to get an, an extension on one of our reservoir cover projects from the Department of Public Health, over funding related issues, and they, they said, no, the, the deadline stands, we've worked with you for years to get here, you have this obligation, move forward.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I don't live under threats, especially by other government bodies that don't necessarily deliver what they say they're going to do in the first place. I mean, the integrity of the process is what I care about. Now, I did talk to Chuck Ray, he's my guy in the district, he said he's in favor. I talked to Humphreyville, he said, yeah, he has a lot of good reasons for it. But I'd like to ask Ms. Perry, who has shepherded this for quite a while, why she is not supportive of this and try to understand it. I'm trying to do my homework and figure it out. Ms. Perry.
Is it all right for me to respond to him?
He has one minute and 30 seconds left.
Okay, great. Well, basically, again, going back to the words that I said earlier, principles of sound management of public funds, and I think we need to demonstrate as a body to Mr. Nichols that we can be supportive of him as he moves forward with these requests for proposed rate increases by supporting him in his structural reform of the costs associated with employment and operational costs at the Department of Water and Power, and, and building a future that is sustainable, particularly with respect to the creation of a new pension tier. Unless the department feels that they have our support in engaging in that kind of reform activity, they're going to have to keep coming and asking for rate increases, and we will not be able to demonstrate to the public that the department has done as much as it could, maybe with the debt reduction trust fund with the reserve, and I recognize the bond rating and how that interrelates, and I can't deny that reality. But we need to support him and them to show that they have done as much modification, much work on parity, much work on pension tiers and operational costs, so that we move forward with these capital improvement projects, we can say to the ratepayer, okay, we've done as much as we could, and we still need this rate increase. It may be less than the one we originally asked for, but we still need it. Now, this rate increase that you will vote on today is not going to go away, this is just the foundation for future rate increases. So this is a building block, and he's on a timeline. And I, I said earlier, I said yesterday, I'm going to vote no, because I want to, you know, as difficult as this is.
Councilman Perry, I hate to interrupt, that was the last minute and a half, but you coincidentally happened to be on the, on the queue next.
Should I give him some time back?
So, Councilman Rosendale, thank you, that was your three minutes. Councilman Perry?
I'm about to finish my question.
Okay, we can push it again?
Mr. President, my question is, where is he across those two months?
Councilman Rosendale, let's go through the order. So Councilman Perry, you're next, then Councilman Zine and Councilman Rosendale. Councilman Perry, go ahead.
All right, since he didn't ask for time back, he'll get his own fresh time.
That's it.
So anyway, the, my point is, is, you know, either we stand as a body to support Mr. Nichols in an effort to bundle together all of those elements that demonstrate to the ratepayer that we put together the best and highest use of the department, the greatest amount of effort that we can make to rein in our costs associated with employee benefits, pension, all of those things, and to be supportive and to not be fearful or afraid of what it may do to any one of us down the road when we stand for election or for reelection. But that being a reality, I actually had a motion, but I didn't pursue getting a second because I knew, I knew that I wouldn't be able to. So I'm just going to close with this, that I think, you know, the timing is what it is, and Mr. Nichols is a very straightforward, very honest person, but we should try to be consistent whenever possible, and this is an opportunity to allow the, the ratepayer advocate to review this package. And I hope that when he does, and he, he may not after today on this particular rate increase. today on this particular rate increase, but there are more coming on the heels of this, that he does that with the understanding that we have to explore operations, we have to explore maintenance costs, we have to explore the reserve fund, we have to explore the debt reduction trust fund, to see how those might impact future rate increases and mitigate impacts to the ratepayer.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Colleagues, we do have several customers who need to leave soon. If we can do a vote today, that'd be great. That's one of the reasons why I'm pushing so hard to keep it within the three minutes. Next speaker is Congressman Zion, then Congressman Rosendale.
The, um, the water, do we get water from the aqueduct? The California aqueduct?
The California aqueduct, the Colorado River aqueduct, and the Los Angeles aqueduct.
Okay, are they covered? Are they going through any modifications?
They are not covered, and they are before the treatment process, where these reservoirs we're talking about are after the treatment process.
So the treatment process takes place where?
Uh, primarily up in the, our largest one is up in Silmar for both ours and Metropolitan Water District.
And then, once it's treated and then comes into the holding before it's distributed?
It comes in.
So the process that comes down from the snow, from the water, from the rain, whatever, there's no protection? We're talking about the time after it gets treated with chlorine?
Correct, after it's filtered and disinfected, yes.
And how long is the project going to take?
The, which.
To bring it up to standard?
Um, well, we've got five different reservoirs that we have to cover, and we've got the Silver Lake Reservoir, Ivanhoe, Elysian, Upper Stone Canyon, and Los Angeles Reservoir. To, to get all of them done, it's probably going to be about 2018, I think, is our latest schedule to get Los Angeles.
So it will be done in 2018? But, but there are interim dates for getting it completed in December 2013, another one by November 2014, another by August 15, uh, 15, et cetera. So they're not all going to be done at one, they're not all going to be done one time?
No, each, each one has a separate compliance date associated with it.
So the water that's treated, it's going to sit in those that aren't upgraded, that's going to be okay, yet we're going to upgrade the other ones, so it'll have more protection. So we're treating the city, certain areas are going to have protection, and other cities, other parts of the city aren't going to have protection till 2018, is that correct?
In, in the end, all the reservoirs will need to be.
In the end, in 2018, but between now and 2018, this is 2012, from 2012 to 2018, we're going to do it in parcels, but some of them will be treated, and some will have the protection, others won't till 2018. Yet it's an emergency that we get this done today. That's my point. I don't see it an emergency, I don't see it urgent, since it's going to be 2018 when we finish the project.
But, but, I mean, this, this started with the enactment of the surface water treatment rule back in the 1980s, and we have been behind schedule in complying with this regulation on almost every reservoir that we've had. The Health Department has been very cooperative in working with us and allowing us to have additional time, but in exchange for that additional time, they required a commitment on our part, and we committed to having these things done by date certain.
And with all due respect, I committed to the voters, and I'm going to hold by my commitment. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, please.
Thank you. I know these are very sensitive issues, there's timing, there's how we are comprehensive in our approach, but there are some cases that we have been struggling with. One question is, the, the department has been in mediation with the Citizens Committee to, to save Elysian Park for the past 20 years. Can you explain the process to address this reservoir going forward?
As it pertains to Elysian Park, we will, there's been a environmental impact report under the California Environmental Quality Act that has been completed, comments have been received from the public, and the Board of Water and Power Commissioners takes action on that in, in late February, later, later on in this, on this, on this month, before they then go forward and, and let the contracts to complete that part of the project.
I am very concerned because this reservoir is located in park or wrecked in parks, that serves as an open space, many in a park park committee for many years, and it should continue to do so. So in that context, as we look at the issues that the committee has raised, as we move forward, they will be able to engage and address these concerns in this process?
Yes, they can, they, they have been engaged, and they have an opportunity to be before our board, at our board meeting later this month, and as we go forward with the, the completion of that project and adoption, and after our board has adopted the associated measures with that, there will be opportunities for them to review and provide input into, into that process as we move forward.
Great, so there still is a ray of hope to continue moving forward in the vision the community had been led to believe two years ago, the commitment was made with the previous board. Would that be accurate?
I'm not quite sure I fully understand the question, Councilman.
In other words, there was a commitment made several years back. This process has to move forward, there's a ray of hope that in looking at the project, they'll be able to revisit and basically restate what you have just mentioned in terms of having access to that vision and, and addressing it in the future.
Yes, I mean, within the confines of us having to meet the, the, the water quality requirements, but yes, there's still opportunity for them to, to, to weigh in and weigh in and as we go forward on that project.
Okay, I do want to thank you. I understand it's a systems-wide approach. I do know that there's a history with each project, and each project has its own issues, but I know this one started 20 years ago, it's 20 years later, and it still hasn't been finished. It is the parkport area, the advocacy for this has come from the understanding of the sensitivity, sensitivity being a park, and so the issues tend to pile up there, and I'm looking forward to working with you to see how we can resolve this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to open up a public comment. In the valley, we have Mr. Patel. One minute public comment, one minute public comment.
The urgency of moving forward, I don't know if you guys, 99 minutes, thank you very much. Um, I don't know if you guys know the shock doctrine, right? I think, I think a lot of you guys made that point where this isn't going to get done until 2018, why are we in such a rush now? It's the second day of the ratepayer advocate, and he's being asked to approve, now, this isn't a rate hike, you guys made mention of that, this is laying the groundwork so that you can make increases, water rate increases, in the future to pay for water quality improvements. They say we got to improve our water quality, where is the money going to come from? The shell game now starts, because we know when you raise rates, whatever, on, on water, on electricity, on, on garbage collection, whatever it is, the money doesn't necessarily end up where it's supposed to go. Isn't that so true? So, another thing that, I mean, I could go on and on, but you already cut my time in half, um, another thing that I would like to say is, when we ask for this money, let's, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars, us activists working on community gardens or whatever else we're working on, we're working on $5 a day. I'm worried about my bus pass.
Thank you very much, that completes your minute, I appreciate it. Now we have Kristin James, Anna Nguyen, and Jessica Duboff. Please come forward.
All three.
All three at this time?
Here in chambers.
In chambers, here in chambers, thank you. State your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Anna Nguyen with the Central City Association. Uh, in the past few years, CCA has typically found ourselves on the opposite side, opposite side of the table with DWP on water and power rate increases, uh, but today we are in agreement. We've had a fair opportunity to review the pros and cons of this proposal, and even though these, this increase could result in millions of dollars of increased costs for our members, we are on board. We have to find that delicate balance between managing the financial hardship this may pose on ratepayers, but also giving DWP the means to continue operating and providing services, and I think in this case, we have, we understand the, DWP has no choice but to meet its legal obligations. We believe this is a responsible and prudent decision, and we hope you agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. You, Christine.
Jessica.
All right, okay, Jessica.
Good afternoon, my name's Jessica Duboff, I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to welcome Councilman Buscagno, excited to have you here. I'm here to express our support for the one-time rate increase to the water quality factor cap. We believe this increase is necessary to provide adequate funding to complete the water storage improvements, which will allow DWP to meet federal water quality standards. As an organization dedicated to improving business conditions and quality of life for Los Angeles residents, supporting a rate increase is never an easy call. However, we understand that without adequate funds to meet water system compliance requirements, the DWP will be faced with fines, and ratepayers will have to absorb even higher costs in the future. Maintaining our infrastructure is key to a vibrant, competitive city for business and residents. This increase will allow the department to keep drinking water safe for customers while meeting all state and federal laws. On a related note, we welcome Frederick Pickle as the Executive Director of the OPA and look forward to working with him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kristin James from Hill to Bay. Matt Dowd has been removed from the meeting, Arnold Sacks, Susan Borden, and Tony Wilkerson, if you come forward. Tony?
Thank you. Tony Wilkinson, I chair the Neighborhood Council, Department of Water and Power, memorandum of oversight, memorandum of the Understanding Oversight Committee, a long name for an organization that's dedicated to open disclosure to the neighborhood councils and the public from the department, it's worked very well, and I can say on behalf of neighborhoods, what you have before you today is not a surprise, it was part of the unprecedented outreach over six months ago to all of the communities on the total factors driving the DWP's needs for rate coverage. The department's looking at some very hard deadlines, what you have today is a subset of the complete package that will be reviewed by the ratepayer advocate. Speaking as an individual, I do support this effort to meet mandated deadlines, I think it's common sense to use this funding to meet the deadlines, and the water quality, the water system is a crown jewel of the people of Los Angeles, I ask you to please protect it with this increase.
Yes, thank you, good, good afternoon. You really do a disservice, the more money that's involved here, the less time the public gets to speak. So, HJP talked about pension reform, but you had DWP in the chambers a year and a half ago to discuss pension reform, and you didn't do anything on that. Nice action. The DWP wants to eliminate the six cents per quarter rate increase, turn it into a 35 cent yearly hike, so that means they're getting a 33% hike on their six cent per quarter yearly increase, that's 11 cents more. Instead of getting a quarterly increase, they're getting an increase every two months. Councilman Labans talked about infrastructure, pipe, these gentlemen talking about covering reservoirs, so which is it? And wasn't that supposed to be done by the big balls that were going to cover back in 2009? How many reservoirs are in the city of LA that you still need to cover, five more? Rosendale, integrity, boom.
Thank you, Arnold, come up, and I'll give you a tour.
Yeah, thank you for the extra minute, we really appreciate your time.
Come up from Lenox sometimes, we'll look at it together. Susan Borden, please. Susan Borden?
Susan Borden had to leave, Sally Newbauer.
Well, Sally, I'll call your name.
I'm reading her statement.
I know, well, Sally, hold on a second, I'm calling Sally Newbauer for Sally Newbauer's time. Susan's not here, we don't call Susan. So you can either speak for yourself or Susan. I'm calling Sally Newbauer right now. Go ahead, please.
I'm Sally Newbauer, I'm with the Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Park, and as part of an over 20-year mediation process, I want to say that Elysian has been in mediation, we have been in mediation to talk about a resolution for, for the reservoir. The resolution, the only one that is acceptable, is a buried tank with landscaping on it. This would create 14 new acres of parkland, and it would be the right thing to do for the community and for the future of the city of Los Angeles. It would create inner-city parkland, and it would last for 100 years. This project should be included in the package that is before you today, it would only amount to approximately 26 cents more for your average bill. It's another $85 million to do the right thing at Elysian Park, which is a buried tank with landscaping on it. I urge you to include Elysian Park in this, in your projects.
Thank you very much. Marion Sue, Dory Frank, Carolyn Cassavan.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, I'm Marion Sue, living at 1471 Avon Park Terrace for 60 years, come June. As a resident of Elysian Heights, I am interested in recreational opportunities. I don't mind paying additional taxes to see the long-term solution of buried tanks at Elysian Reservoir, rather than the short-term, more expensive and unattractive rubber cover that will have to be replaced every 25 years. The underground tanks would provide needed acreage for fields and recreation for LA City residents. I hope funds will be added for the buried tanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Cassavan, and I'm with the San Fernando Valley Green Team. I have brought my letter, I'm not sure if it made it into your packet, so I'd like to just submit the, our letter of support. We support the 35 cents per unit water quality factor increase proposed by the DWP. Implementation of these quality, water quality measures is required, it's not a choice. We need to do this now to avoid fines and penalties, which will cost ratepayers more in the long run. This is actually good timing because rates are anticipated to be lower in the coming years, so this increase will essentially keep rates the same as where, what they are right now, and we understand the need to analyze structural costs further. Um, okay, but approving this interim adjustment helps us avoid unnecessary increased costs, and we think that's important to keep in mind as we wait for the ratepayer advocate process to take its time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We did call Dory Frank from Fuller Avenue. Is this Dory? Okay, thank you.
I like everybody's attention, instead of talking to your aide. I live in Paul Corret's district, and the fact of the matter is, most of you haven't gone downtown to see how struggling the businesses are, and yes, you can ask for continuance from the federal government if you want to talk and make sure that the practice of business is keeping business. I know in the Orthodox Jewish community, which I work in, you're going to affect their business. You want to see vacancies on Broadway, Santee, Los industry, go ahead, raise the rate, but what about the pipes you're breaking? I suggest that you continue this for a couple weeks, ask the business people down here and in your districts, how they would, and residents, about paying more money, because I'll tell you something, that means less business, and by the way, that means less money for the city council. So I want you to think about, and ask the business people and the residents how they feel, not just in a letter.
Thank you very much. Christine Peters, and the last card is Jack Humphreyville.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, Christine Peters, President, Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Park. The current administration of the DWP has inherited a very difficult situation with the open reservoirs in the city of Los Angeles. It's not their fault that a lot of the work isn't done, however, they do have to deal with it now. 23 years ago, the DWP proposed to cover Elysian Reservoir with an aluminum roof. This prompted outrage in the community, it revealed that there were 10 open reservoirs across the city that were in jeopardy of being covered, the Coalition to Preserve Open Reservoirs was formed, and the city council mandated a mediation process to resolve solutions for each reservoir. 23, 20 years later, after mediation, environmentally sensitive solutions for all the open reservoirs dealt with to date except for Elysian and Upper Stone, as the only reservoir is left to be mitigated. The Elysian community has demonstrated over and again that the only responsible solution for Elysian is a landscape buried tank, as opposed to staff's proposal of a seven-acre rubber cover, which would create the same industrial blight that spawned the lawsuit that began this process. We will not accept a seven-acre rubber cover in our park, this is a parkport area, we expect the best for our communities of the central area of Los Angeles that is poorly.
Thank you very much, Christine. Jack Humphreyville?
My name is Jack Humphreyville. I find it sort of funny to be here today, supporting a rate increase for the Department of Water and Power after probably writing 150 articles regarding the Department of Water and Power. I support it for two reasons, one, business, and secondly is because I trust Mr. Nichols. After one year, one week, and one day, he and his team have performed absolutely phenomenal outreach, especially even in absolute terms as well as in relative terms. I think that, if you think that the Department of Water and Power wants to be up here, being the focus of everything, you're probably the type of person that would enjoy having a root canal and a colonoscopy on the same day without any painkillers. This is not their idea of a good time. I think it's important to note that this, this ask is only 5% to 10% of the total ask that DWP has on the table, and also that this is going to be subject to the review of the ratepayer's advocate. It also gives the ratepayer's advocate a little bit more time to breathe once he gets settled. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your remarks and your service to the community, Mr. Humphreyville. Mr. Garcetti on the queue.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was waiting till our public comment, just to make a couple brief comments, and Jack, you do make this feel like Freaky Friday, even if it's a Wednesday, but thank you for your comments, and it was raised by others, you know, what does the business community say? This is a bit of a replay of a year and a half ago, but in, in a This is a bit of a replay of a year and a half ago, but in, in a positive way, I mean that, when you had actually, before, the business community coming to the Department of Water and Power saying, please increase our, at that time, electric rates, because they do see what happens when we don't invest in our infrastructure. They do see what the cost is when we don't have a great city that plans for the future. And so I do appreciate the work that the community has done, our Neighborhood Councils and our business community, as well as residents. I just wanted to stand up on the record with Mr. Reyes to support his efforts. I walk in Elysian Park at least once a week, and I want to support his efforts to make sure, you know, I straddle two different communities in my district, Silver Lake Reservoir, which I worked very closely with Mr. Labange a while back, and do feel a little bit that we, I guess, a lot of them moving to go to the headworks, which prevented us from having very costly disruptive construction in Silver Lake area, I thought was paid for before. Clearly, it's not all paid for, and that may be because of other costs in the organization, which we need to look at closely, and I hope that the Ratepayer Advocate will. But I also represent Echo Park, not the exact area in Elysian Park that Mr. Reyes does, but, you know, those residents on the West Side who enjoy and use that park, and I don't want, and I want to make sure that we're not left behind as well, that there is some sort of equity that is provided for the community in what is a great park and in an area that is articulated as one of the parkpoorest areas of the city, and where we can find solutions together, working with DWP, at something that's responsible for our ratepayers. Ratepayers throughout the city are doing something to allow one neighborhood to stay quite whole and beautiful in Silver Lake, and I think that we deserve the same for both the Solano Canyon residents, Elysian Valley, and Echo Park residents. So I just want to stand up and also put that on the record. And as we look at this and as the board considers that, I do hope that the board will seriously consider some sort of mitigation or addressing the concerns that were raised today by our Echo Park residents.
Thank you, and I second what you said, Mr. Garcetti. Now Mitch England or Councilman of the Great 12?
Thank you. I'd like to just call for the question.
Call for the questions. No other speakers on the cue? Mr. Clerk? Let's open the roll.
Mr. President, you have the Housing Community Economic Development Committee report in front of you for consideration.
Housing?
Oh, pardon me, sorry. The Energy Environment Committee report.
Madam City Clerk--
Wishful thinking.
--would you strike the City Clerk's thing? Strike it, Allen. There it is. Mr. Garcetti?
Mr. Alietti only messes up once a year. We've just witnessed it. He's near perfect, but we've witnessed that he's human today.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please, yes, Ms. Perry?
For purposes of clarification, would you have the clerk explain what a yes vote means and what a no vote means?
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, for purpose of clarification, explain what committee report is in front of us and a yes vote and a no vote. Thank you.
We have the Energy Environment Committee report and ordinance relative to proposed modifications to the water quality improvement adjustment factor and the amendment of associated water rate ordinances. A yes vote would be to approve the recommendations of the Energy and Environment Committee report, and a no vote would be in opposition to those recommendations.
Very good. That is before us, members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, four noes.
Okay, forthwith on that matter?
Sir, I'm sorry, that cannot go forthwith. As an ordinance, it will now go over for a second reading next week.
Fourth with the second reading next week. Thank you very much. All right, next item before--
As you wish, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to ask that we pull 25 real quick out of order. 25 real quick out of order.
Thank you for doing that. This is another plus that's happening in our transportation world. We have money that we're going to be using to expedite these projects. I'm asking Claire to come on up and explain it to us rather quickly, so you all can appreciate that we are moving forward with Measure R. Claire, could you come up to the table, please, and explain what is before us? And what I would like to say frankly is, we're doing anything we can possibly do to accelerate Measure R infrastructure needs that we have as a city. Claire, would you explain the $3.1 million grant from Metro to do transit-oriented development planning for 10 stations along the Crenshaw and Exposition Line? Please.
Yes, good afternoon, Claire Bowen, Los Angeles Department of City Planning. We are very pleased to have the opportunity to receive $3.105 million from Metro for this TOD planning effort. Metro was very specific in the lines we could use for doing this TOD planning, specifically to the Crenshaw Lines and the Expo Phase 2. And these are areas where we think it's be very important to develop some TOD planning. So we're going to be doing five stations on the Expo Phase 2, including actually the Venice Robertson, which is a portion of the final phase of Expo Phase 1, as well as the five stations along the Crenshaw Corridor, including the one down by the airport. Metro has set a very, very tight timeframe for doing these. We have to do these TODs in two years. I think it's really important to be developing the ordinances, to be able to do land use planning, and really look at pedestrian and bicycle connections to these stations, and we're very excited to get going.
Okay, bicycles, pedestrians, and mass transit. Will the community people affected directly by it, like for instance, I have two stops pretty much for my district. One is at Sepulveda, Mr. Coretts and I share that. Another one will be at Bundy. And then, of course, there are other issues too with the other areas. Will we involve our communities in this planning process?
Absolutely. The involvement of communities are going to be a critical component. We have a certain amount of money set aside for doing a lot of public outreach.
Good. All right. I just wanted us to hear it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
I asked for an aye vote.
Very good. All right, let's, Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll on this item.
Mr. President, pardon me, I do believe you have cards on this matter.
Okay.
Are there cards?
Is there required public hearing?
A public hearing has not been satisfied, sir.
Mr. Arnold Sacks? Mr. John Walsh? Mr. Walsh, I'm ordering one minute public comment. If you need a little extra, please take it, but please finish it in one minute. Thank you.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to Googling at Drop Dead CRA Day. We're 100% in favor of this, this measure. It is 100%, I should say zero. $3 million for planning, nothing for transportation. In fact, this is racism. This is, you're going to build around the stations, and the people who are going to use it are going to be the minorities on the West Side who will work for the white, upper-middle-class people who live here. It is racism, and R is for racism, and R is for Rosendahl, but it's politically correct racism. You saw Valerie Stewart, didn't you? HollywoodHighlands.org and Walsh Confidential. $3 million for planning of developments and malls around stations. For shame!
Mr. Najorian? Mr. Sax is left the building.
Respectable City Council members, Chief Alangelino, I endorse this item 25, endorse the motion of Rosendahl Coretts relative to granting funding of $3 million, $3 million to establish 10 transit-oriented districts. You see, I live in the area of Crenshaw and Exposition Boulevard, and I see that fully constructed, fully constructed metro stations, you know? And we were only, you know, we were testing, we were testing all those train stations, all those trains being tested. And I wonder, why MTA creates delays and doesn't open up, you know, rail, that line fully to the public, you know? They create delays, and our ports were delayed, they are awful, and we actually need to take that money as soon as possible and open those stations immediately. That's what I claim for, for what was MTA, we built a station on Crenshaw and Exposition Area, be open as soon as possible. And with money, definitely approve this motion in order to have the station opened as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Mr. Patel in Van Nuys City Hall. Mr. Clerk?
Right. I'm a graduate student studying public transportation, and I'm paying $4,000 a semester in tuition to do the research that you guys are then going to pay somebody else to do for. I strongly suggest the gentle lady, she seems sharp and quick and to the point, to definitely outreach to public transportation and urban planning departments at different universities. There is free labor to be had. Students like myself are capable. Unfortunately, we get stuck, we get stuck a lot of the times, right? Just like that. Again, use the students in different urban planning departments across, we have 11 four-year universities who's got, I'm at Northridge right now specifically, and we've got a whole spade of professors who would do research on this as part of their normal ongoings. It's definitely an underutilized resource. Please look into that as part of your outreach. There are capable people willing to do research for free, and that would definitely leverage this $3 million to get more accomplished.
That completes the public comment. There's no speakers on the cue. Mr. Clerk? Shall we open the roll?
Absolutely, sir.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Fourth with on this one, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you very much. Next item will be number 18.
18 was called special for Councilmember Buscagno.
If we can join 18 and 19?
18 and 19 together--
Yes.
--at a public hearing. It has been held in committee, so there's no--
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And if I can have Port Staff here and kindly introduce yourself, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Catherine McDermott. I'm Deputy Executive Director with the Port of Los Angeles.
Thanks, Kathleen, for being here. Can you explain to us exactly what the foreign trade zone is and how it benefits the Port of Los Angeles?
The Foreign Trade Zone program is actually a program through the Department of Commerce, the federal government, and the intent was to facilitate international trade and increase competitiveness of US companies. So what this does is, the grantees of the foreign trade zone, like the Port of Los Angeles, are able to pass along a grant benefits from the federal government to individual companies. In this case, they can put, bring their goods over and put them in warehouses, store them, manipulate them, and not pay customs duties till the products go into the market.
And how many do the Port of Los Angeles, does the Port of Los Angeles oversee?
We have about 17 general-purpose zone users, and then we have four sub-zone users, proprietary users.
Kathleen, does the port make money from these agreements, or is it just local companies that benefit from these foreign trade zones?
It's, it's the companies that benefit from the tax deferral or, or the duties that are deferred or eliminated. The port receives a minor fee, about $5,000 a year per agreement, and that's intended to cover our staff costs only.
Colleagues, I urge an aye vote here. It's important that we support our small businesses and to keep these warehouses employed with people to help them put food on the table. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the cue? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 27, called Special for Cards. I might advise that there is a substitute motion, 27A, that is also before you for consideration.
Arnold Sacks? John Walsh? Mr. Sacks is not here, Mr. Walsh is here. Thank you. One minute public comment. If you need a little more, you can take it.
There's nothing John Walsh cannot accomplish in 60 seconds. John Walsh, Walsh Confidential, HollywoodHighlands.org. This is a motion for my great friend, Mr. Alacon, who came to our Drop Dead CRA Day celebration, had his picture taken. We're 100%. I haven't been out to the Hanson Dam Park in a number of years. I went out, I remember, there was some gigantic music festival that went on there. I think it was country music. It was quite a while ago. It was fantastic. I think that the Hanson Dam Park is one of the best dam parks in the world. I think the parks, and of course, that's true of most of the parks in the city of Los Angeles. Fantastic parks, and we have to thank statesmen like Mr. Alacon and Mr. Krikorian for keeping these dam parks so damn beautiful. Thank you, HollywoodHighlands.org.
No other cards? Mr. Clerk, no other speakers? Let's open the roll on this item?
Mr. President, that would be on the substitute motion.
Absolutely, Mr. Clerk. On the substitute motion. So we can open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 31, called Special for Cards. I might advise that 31A, amending motion, is, has also been distributed and is before you for consideration.
Arnold Sacks? Jacob Miller? Adam Hoots? Forgive me if I've said that improperly. Any of those three people here? Mr. or Ms. Hoots? Van Owen Avenue in Van Nuys? If we call your name, would you please identify yourself to the microphone?
My name is Jacob Miller. I'm an animal care technician with Los Angeles Animal Services for the last 10 years. I'm here to speak to you today about the committee reassignment. We're all very concerned at Animal Services about this reassignment, because we are being moved out of the Department of Public Safety, which we have been in for a very, very, very long time, and for good reason. The reason why it doesn't make sense is that it says here in the resolution on the second paragraph, it's to enable the council to properly legislate. And we don't see how that can be done if we're not kept in public safety, because that is essentially what Los Angeles Animal Services provides for the city. We also see this as a precursor to privatization. We see this as an attempt to remove law enforcement overtime, and with the, with the fact that another shelter is being offered up to another nonprofit group out there, we, we feel that the rest, the rest of us, if law enforcement is removed, will just get gobbled up by groups like Best Friends Animal Society. We also know and acknowledge the fact that, you know, whatever's going to happen is going to happen. We do realize that these shuffles happen all the time, but we ask that you please give us the courtesy that we have not been provided in the past, and speak with the union reps, and speak with the members. This is a very important thing, and you guys could be looking at a lot of liability. We haven't had animal with rabies for the last 40 years. We don't want to see that happen again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is it Ms. Hooks?
Yes.
Please come forward. Thank you very much.
Oh, one minute. Yes, my name is Angela Hooks, and I'm an animal control officer with the Department of Animal Services. And I'm sure when you hear "Animal Services," you think adoptions, puppies, kittens, and you may even think of the controversial attempt at a no-kill shelter. But there's another side to Animal Services or to this department that we really don't think about, and to you absolutely need us, and that's the law enforcement side, the animal control officers, the 50-plus men and women who put on a uniform every day and go out and enforce the laws of Los Angeles and the state of California. We collect the fees for the licensing, we, you know, enforce, make sure that the dogs have rabies vaccinations. We pick up the aggressive dogs that are roaming your streets that cause damage like this, damage like this. We do animal cruelty complaints. We take care of the rattlesnakes in your mother's garden. We work with LAPD, CHP, LAFD on a regular basis, and we're very concerned about the move to put, take LA Animal Services out of a public safety committee and put them into a personnel slash animal welfare committee. This committee has little to do with animals or welfare.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hooks. Arnold Sacks? Daniel Gus?
Justin Elias? Animal Services could no less be a public safety department than LAPD should be in Arts Park and Recreation Department, than the LAFD should be in, under Cultural Affairs. LA Animal Services is inherently a public safety entity. How else are you going to deal with animal cruelty, animal torture, animal neglect, animals for sale on Western Avenue? How are you going to do that if it's not a public safety agency? Who's going to deal with dogfighting, with licensing, with wildlife, with emergency response? And it's, 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 I believe, being done to privatize the department, to give it away to Best Friends. It's wrong, and I also want to know how Brenda Barnett's niece got a perfect score on the employee test, the same way Mark Salazar's son got a perfect score. There's trouble. Please don't switch this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jason Elias?
Good afternoon, council members. Council President, Jason Elias, Regional Coordinator for SEIU Local 721. We represent the animal care technicians and animal control officers. As you heard from our members earlier, there's a bit of a concern about the change in the committee, Personnel, Animal Welfare, which I think is a great acronym. committee, Personnel, Animal Welfare, which I think is a great acronym. I guess it's going to be called PAWS now, which is quite nice. But there is, there is a concern in terms of the law enforcement, public safety component. So we ask you to look at that and also whatever committee ends up looking at animal services, that you work closely with us to ensure that the issues that you just heard from our members and from the public about animal welfare are deeply looked at with this committee. So that's all my concerns. I also forgot to say welcome, Councilmember Buscagno, and look forward to working with all of you. We're very happy with the other committee organization, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Walsh, please.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. 36,000 successful search requests the last nine days. These committee assignments are outrageous. I hope you can go to Mayor Sam, go to Street Hassel, go to Ron K.L.A., and they will explain those blogs, what's happening. We think that Ms. Perry should keep her assignments the way they were. We think that there is a vendetta on part of Mr. Wesson against Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks isn't here. Apparently, he is seriously ill. We wish him help. We wish him all the best, and we are sending him a get well card. And have you sent him a get well card? Has the city? He hasn't been here in five weeks. And when he's gone, it's sad how Mr. Reyes and Mr. Wesson gang up on an African-American and take his chairmanship away.
All right, that completes the public comment on this. Mr. Kretsch, you had any comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the change to personnel. Not that public safety had a lack of interest in animal issues, but I think with the charge of dealing with the crime issues in the city of Los Angeles and fire safety and other emergency services, I have to say, I don't think this committee has ever been able to focus as much as it would in the ideal on animal services. And I think the Personnel Committee absolutely will be able to do that. It's not without a look at public safety. I did even chair public safety for a brief period of time, so I can promise that that won't be ignored. But a focus on animal legislation, which often wasn't heard in an expeditious manner, and a focus on all the other issues that some of the same people that testified have complained about, I think will occur in this committee. So there'll be a much closer watch on what's going on in animal services, and I think people that are concerned about animal issues will be happy with how they're handled in the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. There's no other speakers at this time, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes.
Mr. President, there's been a request to send this matter forthwith.
Absolutely, forthwith. Next item, I know we have some specials. Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. President, I believe we'll go to special number one, and the maker of the motion will speak to the findings.
Thank you. Mr. Zine at the Third District.
Mr. LeBonge. The Rule 23 findings, urgency on this matter. This rose since the posting of today's agenda, and that is why we're here on this special number one.
Would you want to explain it?
Well, the federal law has a rule, and this motion is responsive to that rule. So I move that pursuant to Section 245 of the City Charter, the City Council asserts jurisdiction over the November 10, 2011 South Valley Area Planning Commission's action to approve the continued operation and maintenance of an existing synagogue located at 5726 North Fallbrook Avenue, and assert jurisdiction of this matter referred to Planning and Land Use Management Committee for further action. And the reason for that is we need to be in compliance with federal law, and this will permit us to be in compliance with federal law once it goes to the commission.
All right, on the findings, let's put the findings on this. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you very much. Now we can consider it. We have one card from Mr. John Walsh. One minute, if you need a little more, you can take it.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Again, someday we're going to show up here and there's going to be nothing on the agenda. And you're going to sit up here and over and over again declare an urgency posted after the agenda has been posted, that came up after the agenda was posted, and you will sit here and decide everything. Remember, the Brown Act was strengthened when you went in the back room 10 years ago and voted yourself a raise. We have no idea what you're talking about. You hand it out. No documents on this special issue. We're supposed to trust you. And I'm telling you, one yesterday, one today. We're going to have 10 and 15. We're going to have the city run by urgency, by no posting, no documents. You don't know, you didn't know what happened yesterday. You voted on faith. You don't have any documents, and the public is supposed to have the documents and the agenda item before you do.
Thank you very much. It is posted in the public notice board to the rear of the John Farrow Chambers. Mr. Zine, go ahead, please.
What the matter deals with is the operating hours, and sadly, the South Valley Planning Commission restricted the hours, and we need to modify those hours to comply with federal law, so that's why we're sending it back. They will, instead of having a condition of 7:00 a.m., it will be 6:00 a.m., but needs to go back to the plum so we can resolve that matter. Again, we want to be in compliance with federal law, the Rupa, and that's what this will do, simply modify the hours in accordance with federal law.
Very well. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to special number two. The city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that the City Council offer a reward for information leading to the arrest of suspects in the death of Brianna Guzman, who was reported missing December 26th and whose body was found January 26th near the Riverside on-ramp to the southbound Glendale Freeway. Immediate action is required to arrest the suspects for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Very well. On the substance, on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Findings have been met. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. This is a very tragic case. Ms. Guzman leaves behind two children. She was very young, was part of Lincoln Heights community, and unfortunately, there's another reward on special three, so I'll speak to that after. Ask for an i-vote.
Very well. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
So ordered and forthwith. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to special number three. Again, the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested the City Council to offer a reward for information leading to the arrest of suspects in the death of Michelle Lozano, whose body was found in a plastic storage container in Boyle Heights near the Cesar Chavez Boulevard off-ramp of Interstates 5 and 10 on April 25th, 2011. Immediate action is required to arrest the suspects for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues and those that are listening, these are distinct cases. We have been in contact with the police department on a daily basis on these issues. There's no evidence to describe it any other way but distinct cases, but I do appeal to the community to give us any information they might have regarding both of these incidents. You can send your information anonymously. Obviously, you have a 17-year-old young lady and a 22-year-old, both within the Lincoln Heights area, and there is cause to be concern. Obviously, we need to protect our children, but anything you can do to give us information would help us in closing these cases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you. So ordered, forthwith. Mr. Clerk, what's before us right now?
Mr. President, that brings us back to item 24. The city, excuse me, the city attorney advises that this matter be taken in closed session.
Yes, there is one card for Mr. Walsh before we go into closed session, and Mr. Dowd.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Googling at Walsh Confidential. This concerns the communities actively living, independent, and free versus the city of Los Angeles. This is a, what's going on in the back is concerns about $150,000. I'd just like to point out that at this meeting, Eric Garcetti sat there with the deputy of the HUD secretary and had a meeting while housing is under criminal investigation in the city. It happened. We have a picture of it. You're going...
He's not talking about this item.
That's it. I'm not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. So this completes the public comment on that item. Sergeants, would you clear, prepare the council chambers, the John Farrow Chambers for closed session? All city staff can ask that those who are not put into this shall leave the chambers. All city staff can ask that those who are not put into this shall leave the chambers. All right, we are out of closed session. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Sir, we do need, in regards to item 24, we need to vote to send this matter back to the Budget and Finance Committee.
On item 24, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Going back to Budget and Finance. Next item, please.
Mr. President, we do have special number four before us. The city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Fire Department has notified city staff of the need for counsel to direct appropriate departments to repair the access road to the Mount Lee Communication Station, which has been compromised due to a water line break. Immediate action is required to direct departments to repair the road for public safety's sake. Government, or, the council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
All right, colleagues, on the findings, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next, Mr. Clerk.
Sir, now we need to, the, to vote on the motion. That motion is before us.
Mr. LaBanche.
One line broke from General Services up to Mount Lee, near the Hollywood sign, washed out half a road. That's where the hilipad goes to the air support. We need to get it fixed urgently. I ask for an aye vote.
All right, thank you. Mr. LaBanche doesn't want to queue on that. So on that matter, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Forthwith, Mount Lee is a very important part of the city of Los Angeles. All right, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and refer.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Seen Mr. LaBanche's announcement?
Mr. Garcetti and I were at Hollywood Highland with your good friend Dennis Jimmy Kimball.
Jimmy Kimball, live from Channel 7.
And take it away, Mr. Garcetti.
125th birthday of Hollywood. So happy birthday, Hollywood. 125 great years. There's going to be a party tonight, starting at 6:00 PM over at Hollywood Highland. Is that all right? And we're going to be celebrated today. We had a great, great reminiscence of how far we've come and how our second golden age of Hollywood has emerged. And thank you, Mr. LaBanche, for your great help, and Mr. Krebs, who also represents part of Hollywood. Hooray for Hollywood.
And the public's invited to the party?
Absolutely.
Very well. Hollywood Highland tonight for a big party. Hosted by the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, and I've got a meeting tonight. Any other announcements? Seen none? Any adjourning motions? Adjourning motions, Mr. Lusiano, our new council member, adjourning motion?
Thank you, Council President. I have two adjourning motions, one for Mr. Frank G. Herrera. Frank G. Herrera, 86, passed on January 26, 2012, born on February 17, 1925, in Mexico and raised in Arizona. A World War II veteran in the Army. He lived in Wilmington, California, survived by his wife Dorothy, six children, Thomas, Linda, Antonia, Sylvia, Joe, and Dottie. Seventeen grandchildren, nineteen great-grandchildren and a great-great-grandchild. He was preceded in death by his sister Teresa Canez, survived by his sisters and brother-in-law, Amelia Montaña, Olga and Charlie Gutierrez, many nieces, nephews and extended family and many friends. Services will take place Friday, February 3, 2012, at 9:00 AM, All Souls Mortuary. Interment at Wilmington Cemetery following immediately. Frank was a loving husband, father, brother, cousin, uncle, grandfather, great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather and a friend to many. He will be extremely missed by his entire family in the Wilmington and South Bay communities. He was an active member of the Port Community Action Committee, as well as many countless organizations, including the Lions Club of Wilmington. In lieu of flower, in lieu of flowers, I should say, Frank would say, save your money or you may make a donation to his favorite charity, City of Hope or Lions International. Frank will truly be missed in our Wilmington community. Mr. President and colleagues, the second adjourning motion is for Mr. Rudy Savornich Sr. Rudy Savornich Sr. passed away on January 24th, born on September 2, 1924, on Brainbridge Island, Washington. He moved to San Pedro in January 1929 with his family at the age of four and a half. He was a very proud 82-year resident of San Pedro. He was the youngest of four children of Joseph and Mary, Mary Murkovich and Savornich. He attended 15th Street Elementary School, Dana Junior High School, and was a summer 1943 graduate of San Pedro High School. He served in the United States Navy during World War II from 1943 to 1946, being assigned overseas for 36 months. He was a petty officer, second class, and with Chief Cook at both the San Diego and Pearl Harbor naval bases. Later, he was assigned to the USS Santa Inez, a surveillance vessel in the South Pacific Theater of Operations. After the war, he returned home to San Pedro and became a commercial fisherman with his father, brothers and cousins. He fished on many local vessels, including his father's boats, the Long Island and Yankee Boy. In 1955, he became a longshoreman with ILW Local 13. He was seriously injured three times on the waterfront and retired in 1975. In the late 1970s, he was active in parent advisory boards for both Dana Junior High and San Pedro High Schools. He was a member of ILW Local 13 Pioneers Group, the San Pedro Veterans of Foreign Affairs, the San Pedro Elks Lodge, the Wednesday Senior Citizens Club, and was a founding volunteer of the Mary Star Clothing Center for the needy, and a cook for Mary Star to see Christian care for the homeless for several years. He was the longest-serving board member, over 50 years, of the Dalmatian American Club of San Pedro, serving as president from 1980 to 1983. He later served for many years as president of the Dalmatian American, Inc., the property holding company for the club until its retirement just a few years ago. He was known for his happy-go-lucky demeanor, his singing voice and his wonderful cooking. Preceded in death by his parents' sister, Zorka Rengel, brothers Andrew and Anton Zreeni. He survived by his loving wife of almost 60 years, Winifred Winnie, son, of course, our former colleague here, a former city council member, Rudy Savornich Jr., Rudy's wife, Deanne, grandchildren Gregory, Rudolph and Danielle Marie Savornich, sisters-in-law Darren and Violet Savornich, brother-in-law, Jack Tomich, and numerous nieces, nephews and cousins. Funeral mass will be celebrated on Saturday, this Saturday, February 4, 10:30 at Mary Funeral mass will be celebrated on Saturday, this Saturday, February 4, 10:30 at Mary Star to the Sea Parish. Private interment will follow at Green Hills in lieu of flowers. Memorial donations are requested on behalf of the Dalmatian American Club Scholarship Fund in San Pedro. So with that, our thoughts and prayers go out to the Honorable Rudy Savornich Jr. and his family, and of course, his loving wife Winnie. Thank you.
All members, all members, our condolences to Savornich's family. Mr. Kretz.
On the day when we announce 125th anniversary of Hollywood, I think it's very appropriate to adjourn in memory of Frank Cooper, who was a legend in Hollywood, a talent agent who died just short of his 100th birthday in Encino. Just the highlights of his amazing career. He discovered many notable entertainers, including Frank Sinatra. He represented Joe DiMaggio. He arranged boxing matches for Joe Louis. He put on the first quiz show on the radio with the sale of the show Strike It Rich to CBS. He developed the first dramatic TV series, Man Against Crime. He worked closely with Ed Sullivan. He created Dirty Harry and got Clint Eastwood to star in it. He put Man of La Mancha onto the Broadway stage, and he represented a number of authors, most notably Clifford Irving's many books and films. A remarkable man with a remarkable career, Frank Cooper.
Mr. Labange.
Members, I ask we adjourn a member, Christopher Thomas, who passed recently in December. He was 67 years old. He was a great computer leader for UCLA for over four decades, working in their systems to improve all things in technology. His family surely miss him. He attended John Marshall High before he went to UCLA, and he was a much-loved individual. I ask we adjourn a member, Christopher Thomas.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Sad news, I would like to adjourn in memory of Don Cornelius. He was the beloved creator and host of the television show Soul Train. He was born in Chicago and worked as an insurance salesman before attending broadcasting school in 1966, where he honed his broadcasting skills. During this time, he worked as a disc jockey and was a sports anchor for A Black's View inspired by American Bandstand. In 1974, Mr. Cornelius used $400 of his own money to create a pilot for Soul Train, and it went on to be a wild success. Soul Train played a major role in showcasing musical acts and rhythm and blues and soul and other genres to a larger audience. Many of his acts on the show included the likes of Aretha Franklin, James Brown, and many other people who were extremely famous. It ran in syndication for an astonishing 32 years, with Mr. Cornelius serving as the show's host from its inception until 1993. And I ask that we adjourn in his memory today and offer my condolences to his family and all those who knew and loved him.
All members, all members. Thank you, Ms. Perry. No other adjourning motions. That concludes this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We will return on Friday. Have a good afternoon in Los Angeles.